Well, we're not a sanctuary city.
Right.
We're a big move.
Yeah, Ralph's got an awesome session. They almost tested it during the year.
Did you see?
We can probably get it on that screen. Um, yeah, I think we can probably.
I think it would make our problems clear.
Hey, Carlos, is this, is the sound up on the laptop? It's, everything's unmuted.
So, there's a volume thing on the right. That looks like it's up.
Yeah, no, it's, it's up at full. And it was, like I said, it was working a minute ago. What's that? Yeah, the audio is what I'm not getting through right now. Oh, you're getting audio in there, though?
So some families went to the schools and had a baby. Eighty of them, so we'll probably look at it. Okay. Okay, so it's a whole list of. And what we have here is, well, they need to have one item from Cal M A and two items from either Cal B or Cal C. So we look at like two, two.
How you doing?
I'm fine, how are you?
Good. How's it going? Good. Good. Yes, sir. Do you want to see that? Yeah. Sure. Do you want to see that? Yeah. Mike? Mike?
Good, Artie, how are you?
Tired?
Sounds like he's a little, sounds a little bushed.
Is that me?
Yeah.
He doesn't work for anything. Oh, what's this? What is this? Guys, here to see, bring us off the school. Huh? Yeah, Anthrax.
I got him. Oh, well, I don't know about the courses.
Oh, no, no, not for the coaches.
Heidi's gonna be here, right? She, she does.
She was, uh, she was just, uh, we just concluded the early childhood meeting, so she should be here. Early childhood council.
Seen that?
I have quite a bit for executive session, so it would be nice if we could get into it as early as possible, just always hope.
I have a form, but I don't have the person to give out the certificates, so I'll start when Heidi arrives.
Once Barbis gets back, we'll have a quorum, correct?
We have a quorum right now, but the recognition's, Heidi does that, so I need her to come back in.
That's great, that's what we were starting off with tonight. Um, where are they?
She, she was, um, she was in room three two two.
At early childhood council.
Do you want me to check on them?
Meeting tonight. So it's over, it's over now.
Right, it's over, yes.
She should be on her way.
Okay. As soon as she gets here, we'll start.
Hey, how you doing?
You mean, you mean scratch, right? No, it was canceled.
Wow. Stupid, stupid. I miss my family already.
Yeah.
But I can't, it just feels, they're so, just, they're just coming back here.
Okay, Mike's gonna be fifteen, twenty minutes, Brian's gonna be fifteen, twenty minutes late.
Mike Burbis, his stuff is here.
I think Brian makes, Brian makes it to fifteen, twenty minutes. The only one they need is Heidi, as soon as she comes in, we'll start.
I need a couple.
All right, you need some.
These are, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, okay. All right, so we only got a couple of them. What do they have to cap? Okay, so are we gonna give them, or she just gets her?
I can give, I have stuff here.
All right, so let's. Let's ask you. Would you give those to the coaches? As soon as Heidi arrives, we'll, uh, we'll proceed.
Hey, how was the, um, how was, how was the, yeah, camp?
It was great, wasn't it?
Yeah. I'm so sorry I couldn't go.
Yeah, it was fun, kind. It's the Lincoln Day one or something. Church, right? Speaker, Lincoln Assistances. Speaker, uh, at least, really good. Professor G W or something. Every time I go to the, I heard. See him?
Hey, how are you, Heidi?
Glad we have all partners.
Yeah, hey, Heidi, how are you?
And he gave examples.
I think, yeah, Brian's, I believe, second traffic. So, I know he's been so caught up with all the, uh, counting things as it were. It stays the end of the year, right? Well, no.
I'm right in the middle. I don't have to go and walk when I leave here. No matter what the time it is tonight.
Hopefully it won't be too bad tonight.
Uh-huh.
I mean, to the most part, it seems to represent.
Yeah, very, you know, pretty, totally, it's not.
And I think some of the stuff that, um, you know, I had questions on, so, uh, I just, I was just mainly clarifying. The big one was the cranberry thing, um, which, I mean, it was, it's not a sense, um, they, that was a personal activity.
Two of the cheerleaders here, half squad, they set pretty.
I had fun Sunday.
It was nice. And once that soda bread got broken, broken out, they, it was, they didn't know where it was. They found it in the bar, and then they got it out, and they cut it up, so it was good.
I brought three old sodas.
Yeah, exactly. That one change was enough to turn it around.
Okay, so, missing it. Let's go.
Where was, oh, me, Brian's the only one who's, yep, and he's coming. All right, Mike's giving it, I think I'm gonna, all right, we're gonna call this meeting in the Board of Education to order. Uh, first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, will you join us? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is our spotlight, recognizing the Norwalk High School Cheerleaders, F C Act Champions. Uh, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our spotlight section of our agenda for this evening. Tonight, Norwalk High School Cheerleaders take first place. The Norwalk Board of Ed is proud to recognize the Norwalk High School Cheerleading Team for their recent accomplishments in conference competition. Last month, the Cheerleaders won the co-ed division at the Fairfield County Interscholastic Athletic Conference, which is the F C I A C Championship. The team began their preparation well before the start of the school year, with many, many hours of training and practice to get ready for the fall sports season. After cheering on other teams throughout the fall and winter, the Cheerleaders had their own unique opportunity to shine in this competition. In front of a gym full of spectators from throughout the area, the Norwalk High Team performed a high-energy routine full of dance moves, tumbling, and lots of stunts. It was the first league title in cheerleading for the Norwalk High School Bears. In addition to the team honors, Senior Captain Jordan Lewis was, has been named to the all F C I A C team. Norwalk's coaching staff was awarded Coach of the Year recognition by the conference. Congratulations to Norwalk High Head Coach Anthony Munoz, Assistant Coaches Amanda Serios and Jay Ruffin, and team members. We have a lot of team members I'm gonna mention. Many of them couldn't be here tonight, but I will mention their names. Jordan Lewis, Shannon Husina, Sebastian Longo, Emily Dougherty, Julia Dolphin, Brianna Ramsey, Liam Leekley, Michaela Lewis, Kayla Light, Nia Harrington, Paige Chen, Brianna Johnson, Shanaya Daly, Reina Agliar, Samra Sawyer, Serenity Saunders, Corey Russell, and Stephanie Corales. Tonight, we have two present that will be actually honoring the whole group, and we have certificates. We have Shannon Husina and Sebastian Longo, as well as Coaches Anthony Munoz, Amanda Serios, and Jay Ruffin. I'm gonna call your names again, and if you can come up, and we'd like to present you certificates in behalf of the Norwalk Board of Education. Shannon Husaria, if you're here tonight, if you wanna come up. And Sebastian Longo. Coaches, we have Anthony Munoz. Amanda Serios. And our last coach, Jay Ruffin.
Congratulations, thank you. Congratulations, Anthony.
Amanda Serios. And our last coach, Jay Ruffin.
Congratulations, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, and thank you, everybody that came tonight to show their support.
Thank you very much. It's always good to be able to recognize excellence in our school system, of which there is much. Uh, at this point, we're gonna go to the public comments section of the agenda, and over to you, Mr. Barbis.
Okay, we have three, uh, public speakers signed up. Our first public speaker is Brenda Penn Williams. Everyone coming up knows the rules, introduce your name and address, and you get three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Brenda Penn William. I reside at twenty-one Kiran Drive, Norwalk. I have two things I wanna say. First thing I wanna say is, Mike, I invited you two weeks ago for coffee. You have not responded. I have not heard from you, and I don't know what's going on, okay? I say you and I have not heard from you, okay? Second thing I wanna say, I am a substitute here in Norwalk. I like doing it, we're underpaid, ninety dollars, and I came here last year, said the same thing, and I heard from a few of you, you said you were gonna fix it, you have not done it. Here in Norwalk, you've changed the schedule for middle school and high school, okay? So when you sub, and they don't have enough subs, you have to cover a classroom, which is unfair to the substitutes, because when the teachers, um, cover a classroom, they get paid for it. When the substitute covers a classroom, they do not get paid for it, and they do not have a break like the teachers, and that's unfair. So I would like to see, and Eric told me last year that he was gonna work on this, I think, Mike, you told me that, too, and I would like to see you work on it. I would like to see that the substitutes get what they deserve. Thank you. Oh, by the way, I want you to know, I'm leaving because I have to go to church.
Okay, our next speaker is Joseph Jan Durco.
Good evening, Joseph Jan Durco, nine-mat avenue. Over the past few weeks, city leaders have come forward in support of the new school constructions and created a capital budget which builds schools in the capacity we so desperately need, while also allowing for the previous projects at many of the other buildings to move forward. The N F T is excited to see these plans move forward, and I believe we have reached the junction point in which now is the time for partnerships and relationship building. Norwalk Public Schools cannot function without the dedicated teachers, administrators, aides, custodians, and others which serve our students. We ask for more open dialogue and a repaired partnership so that our schools can ultimately better serve our students, their families, and the community as a whole. Over the course of this past year, teachers have repeatedly asked to be included and engaged in the process, however, this is not often the case. It is true, we are invited to attend meetings, but our input, our guidance, our expertise as the boots on the ground are ignored in favor of predetermined decisions that have been made beforehand. We ask that ours and wider community voices be respected and heard as we take these next steps forward, when program models for these schools are considered and then implemented. The N F T can work with I B or STEM or HOT programs, and many have even expressed reservations about the selection of the I B program for South Norwalk. Teachers are select, teachers are seeking more community conversations to increase the buy-in. This may require adjustments, and the district should be willing to.
... the cranberry thing. Um, which, I mean, it was, it's not a sense. So, they, that was a perspective. I'm sorry. Two of the cheerleaders here, in the half of the squad, all these have pretty... I only got a mission of coaching. Okay?
I had fun Sunday.
It was nice. And once that soda bread got broken out, they, it was, they didn't know where it was. They found it in the bar and then they got it out and they cut it up. So, it was good.
I brought three old soldiers.
Lord.
Yeah, so.
Lord. That one change was enough to turn it around.
Okay, so, we're missing any... Let's go. Where is he?
Oh, me. Ryan's the only one who's...
Yep.
And he's coming. All right. The mic's giving a thing, I think I'm gonna... All right, we're gonna call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you join us? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is our spotlight, recognizing the Norwalk High School Cheerleaders, FCAC Champions. Uh, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Spotlight section of our agenda for this evening. Tonight, Norwalk High School Cheerleaders take first place. The Norwalk Board of Ed is proud to recognize the Norwalk High School cheerleading team for their recent accomplishments in conference competition. Last month, the cheerleaders won the co-ed division at the Fairfield County Interscholastic Athletic Conference, which is the FC IAC Championship. The team began their preparation well before the start of the school year, with many, many hours of training and practice to get ready for the fall sports season. After cheering on other teams throughout the fall and winter, the cheerleaders had their own unique opportunity to shine in this competition. In front of a gym full of spectators from throughout the area, the Norwalk High team performed a high-energy routine full of dance moves, tumbling, and lots of stunts. It was the first league title in cheerleading for the Norwalk High School Bears. In addition to the team honors, Senior Captain Jordan Lewis was, has been named to the all FC IAC team. Norwalk's coaching staff was awarded Coach of the Year recognition by the conference. Congratulations to Norwalk High Head Coach Anthony Munoz, Assistant Coaches Amanda Sirios and Jay Ruffin, and team members. We have a lot of team members I'm gonna mention. Many of them couldn't be here tonight, but I will mention their names. Jordan Lewis, Shannon Huzina, Sebastian Longo, Emily Dougherty, Julia Dolphin, Brianna Ramsey, Liam Leekley, Michaela Lewis, Kayla Light, Nia Harrington, Paige Chen, Brianna Johnson, Shanaya Daly, Reina Agliar, Samra Sawyer, Serenity Saunders, Corey Russell, and Stephanie Corales. Tonight, we have two present that will be actually honoring the whole group, and we have certificates. We have Shannon Huzina and Sebastian Longo, as well as Coaches Anthony Munoz, Amanda Sirios, and Jay Ruffin. I'm gonna call your names again, and if you can come up, and we'd like to present you certificates in behalf of the Norwalk Board of Education. Shannon Huzeria, if you're here tonight, if you wanna come up. Congratulations. All right. Thank you so much, and thank you, everybody that came tonight to show their support.
Thank you very much. It's always good to be able to recognize excellence in our school system, of which there is much. Uh, at this point, we're gonna go to the Public Comments section of the agenda, and over to you, Mr. Barbas.
Okay. We have three public speakers signed up. Our first public speaker is Brenda Penn Williams. Everyone coming up knows the rules. Introduce your name and address, and you get three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Penn William. I reside at 21 Kiran Drive, Norwalk. I have two things I wanna say. First thing I wanna say is, Mike, I invited you two weeks ago for coffee. You have not responded. I have not heard from you, and I don't know what's going on, okay? I say you and I have not heard from you, okay? Second thing I wanna say, I am a substitute here in Norwalk. I like doing it. We're underpaid, ninety dollars. And I came here last year, said the same thing, and I heard from a few of you, you said you were gonna fix it. You have not done it. Here in Norwalk, you've changed the schedule for middle school and high school, okay? So, when you sub, and they don't have enough subs, you have to cover a classroom, which is unfair to the substitutes, because when the teachers, um, cover a classroom, they get paid for it. When the substitute covers a classroom, they do not get paid for it, and they do not have a break like the teachers, and that's unfair. So, I would like to see, and Eric told me last year that he was gonna work on this, I think, Mike, you told me that too, and I would like to see you work on it. I would like to see that the substitutes get what they deserve. Thank you. Oh, by the way, I want you to know, I'm leaving because I have to go to church.
Our next speaker is Joseph Jan Durco.
Good evening, Joseph Jan Durco, Nine Mot Avenue. Over the past few weeks, city leaders have come forward in support of the new school constructions and created a capital budget which builds schools in the capacity we so desperately need, while also allowing for the previous projects at many of the other buildings to move forward. The NFT is excited to see these plans move forward, and I believe we have reached the junction point in which now is the time for partnerships and relationship building. Norwalk Public Schools cannot function without the dedicated teachers, administrators, aides, custodians, and others which serve our students. We ask for more open dialogue and a repaired partnership so that our schools can ultimately better serve our students, their families, and the community as a whole. Over the course of this past year, teachers have repeatedly asked to be included and engaged in the process. However, this is not often the case. It is true, we are invited to attend meetings, but our input, our guidance, our expertise as the boots on the ground are ignored in favor of predetermined decisions that have been made beforehand. We ask that ours and wider community voices be respected and heard as we take these next steps forward, when program models for these schools are considered and then implemented. The NFT can work with IB or STEM or HOT programs, and many have even expressed reservations about the selection of the IB program for South Norwalk. Teachers are select, teachers are seeking more community conversations to increase the buy-in. This may require adjustments, and the district should be willing to work with and talk to the people who don't believe that IB is right for them. But we remain concerned about the raw feelings that remain after community members have expressed having little to no input in the selection of the educational program for their new schools. We applaud community conversation that is to occur later this week at Cranby, at Columbus, excuse me. When we choose to work collaboratively, we can make the needed changes and move Norwalk forward. In closing, let us all pause just a moment and reflect on what can be built in this district when we truly work together and to listen to one another. Engage the members of the NFT, the NSA, NASA, and NFEP, and other bargaining units to hear our concerns, but more importantly, listen to our suggestions and possible solutions. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Diane Loricella.
Good evening. Diane Loricella, 21 Blue Mountain Ridge Road. I wanna open with a quote from James Madison. "The advancement and diffusion of knowledge is the only guardian of true liberty." The reason I'm saying that is we just concluded something called Sunshine Week, which is a celebration of when we keep our records open, we have open discussion and conversation. It's celebrated under the Freedom of Information Act. I'm gonna hand out, as I'm speaking, a copy of my, my letter. Uh, I have to go on to a, um, an ordinance committee meeting. I wanted to speak on items five C and six, uh, dash five. I know you're, you're, uh, timing me, so I will be brief. I first wanted to applaud you for all, all of you committing time to continue discussion about the capital budget and the operating budget. I want, I, I left that out. And your readjustment of the time schedule for repairs for future system. In addition, I truly believe that our public buildings must, must explore all available options for reducing expenditures on items such as electricity, heating, cooling, and trash hauling. I've been a longtime advocate for incorporating cleaner and greener building design to our public buildings, as well as our private homes. I have reviewed the capital and operating budgets, and I, I believe that unfortunately there are serious fiscal shortfalls that we are gonna be facing, and I believe the capital budget and the facilities plan does not look at the buildings individually, which is professionally needed for those buildings as far as their energy assessment and their energy profiles. There are benchmarks available for the use of energy, heating, and cooling that I think need to be incorporated into your operating and your, um, capital budget, because that's where we pay for electricity, heating, cooling, gas, et cetera, and fuel, as well as trash hauling. I'll skip around, I'll just say what's still missing for this fiscal year and for the next five years is a proper professional energy management plan approach for reducing this. I also feel that what's before you tonight is the solar arrays at Norwalk High School in Narimac. I just have probably, how many, how many more seconds or minutes do I have? I know some, one of you...
Thirty, thirty.
Thirty, thank you, thank you. I think it's important to get an in-house energy manager, and it has to be bid out, because there are a lot of great people in the business. Uh, tonight, you're gonna be voting on the solar array. I ask that you consider rebidding this two-school package, because unfortunately, this project was put together and does not go far enough. While I read in the newspaper and in, in the, there's a potential for, uh, for 1.5 million if you use all the schools in your, which could be done, that you would actually achieve millions of dollars, that the tax... Lastly, I just ask that you create an Energy and Sustainability Subcommittee to assist the Facilities Committee, which was the reason there's so, I know you've been busy, Mike, with the, with the budget, but if you had included people like myself, and I think this has to happen immediately, if you decide to go forward with the two-school package...
You're at 3:30, Diane.
Okay, thank you. And I thank you for your time, but I'm very serious that this needs further study. It is not helping your, your bottom line. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I just make one comment?
Yeah, sure.
So, Diane, just so you know, and I thought I had told you this, you know, to put solar panels on a school building, you have to have a roof that is relatively new, because you, they don't, the installer doesn't wanna put them in if they have to be ripped out a couple of years later. These two buildings were chosen, and more buildings were not chosen, because all our roofs are close to twenty years old. So, it, they don't lend themselves for a solar panel, and to be honest, we weren't even sure Norwalk High would be in a position to, to do that, and the only reason we are is because a lot of the roofwork was done, and a thirty-year warranty was given. We're about ten years into that warranty, so that gave us that window, and the PPA is only for fifteen years, because we are concerned about that. So, the other schools are not an option, bottom line. It's a fact.
With all due, due, uh, due respect, Mike, you've been misinformed about how to handle this, and so in the, between now and when the council has to vote on what you're voting on tonight, I will get information to Dr. Adamowski and you and others, uh, because this particular project, you'll see miraculously, uh, Green Skies, who I do have a lot of respect for, have miraculously been able to use all of the roof space, and they have determined that there are a lot more healthy roofs, uh, that are at least fifteen years than, than you've been told, I guess, by your facilities. So, unfortunately, because of this misinformation and the lack of a, a, a proper exploratory committee headed up by Mr. Kites, that didn't include people that are knowledgeable, like myself, about how to look at this, you did not get the extended savings of millions of dollars for the tax, not just 1.5 million, which is nothing to sneeze at, it's good. But you could have, had this been done, uh, last year, even last month, you could have realized millions and millions of dollars just for the school system alone, so I, I, I hope to talk with you soon.
And that concludes Public Comments. Chairman Lyons?
All right. Two quick things before the Superintendent's Report. I just wanted to thank the parents, particularly Mark D'Amelio, Drew Todd, and Barb Meyer Mitchell, who spent a whole day in Hartford yesterday, um, testifying on our behalf at the public hearing on the ECS, um, funding. Uh, there is, there is no state issue that is of greater importance to Norwalk than getting fair treatment on that. They were also joined by Dr. Adamowski, who also went up to speak during the designated time for Superintendents of Schools. Um, and it's a full day away from work, it's a major commitment of time. A lot of us who couldn't physically go there, submit written testimony, but there's nothing quite like having people in, in person there, and I wanted to personally thank them for doing that. Um, and since it isn't on the agenda, I just wanted to mention, again, my thanks to the mayor for, uh, supporting our capital budget. Um, you know, this is a huge development for the first time in decades. We're going to have a new school, we're gonna have other schools built, we're gonna have thirty-five million dollars worth of improvements done at the remainder of the schools. Uh, that's, that's a big win for us to be able to make that kind of progress, and I just wanted to thank the mayor, councilman, and other people for supporting us. Dr. Adamowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the, as, as you're aware, the, the board passed a new residency policy earlier this fall, and you had asked for an update on it, um, after, after mid-year, and Dr. Costanzo is gonna provide that to you tonight. Um, he's gonna review, um, the process that has been followed, the results of that, and have some recommendations, um, for you to consider going forward.
Thanks, Dr. Adamowski. Good evening, Board members. I do, uh, come tonight with an update on the year-one residency policy implementation. So, tonight, we're going to, gonna be talking briefly about four different areas, the first of which are the systems that we've put in place since the adoption of the residency policy. Second, the training that has been done up until this point in the school year relative to our staff. Third, uh, some residency data that's been developed in our Office of Operations, and then what we see at this point in the spring as our next level of work. So, first, looking at the systems that have been created. Essentially, prior to this year, we had no system in place, um, for school administrators or school staff to deal with, uh, issues of non-resident, suspected non-resident students in Norwalk. Um, and through the, the work of the Policy Committee, we have been able to take that policy and turn that into a set of procedures that we think are clear, concise, and show a clear, uh, pattern of the direction to follow from the point at which any of our employees believe we have a non-resident student, um, attending one of our schools. First, um, we ask that school administrators and, uh, school staff, including social workers, take a look at potential, uh, flags or non-resident status. This could be returned mail, chronic absenteeism, chronic truancy, uh, repeat patterns of being dropped off late by a, a car versus a bus, among other things. And so, that was just a, a sampling of some of the things that we talked about with our administrators and with our secretaries at our schools in terms of some easy identifiable ways to look for potential non-residents. Second, we ask that they follow up on those initial assumptions by talking with the student, by having the social worker speak with the student, reach out to the family, and ask if things are okay at home, um, if there are any, you know, reasons to believe that their, their housing is situational or a concern at the time. If the school staff believes that a non-resident case may exist, they submit a inquiry form to the Operations Office, which gets reviewed by our Director of School Improvement, Patty Foley, and our School Security Coordinator, Joe Rios. They review this, and then either get back in touch with the school and say, we will look into this further, take a look at, um, what information we have available, and determine that it is not a case worth pursuing, or, um, if there is evidence that we suspect leads to the potential for a non-resident, we enlist the, the work of a private investigator. Now, the private investigator I'll talk to you about in a moment has already handled several cases in Norwalk, which is, uh, the first that we've had, uh, in several years. Um, we have, we have also had a couple, three cases, uh, to be exact, of students who we believe have not been able to verify their residency this year, and in those cases, the Operations Office generates a letter to that family explaining what their rights are under the law, which is they have the right to appeal our decision as a school district, that we believe they are not a Norwalk resident. But in that letter, we set a timetable for which they need to be able to prove that they are Norwalk residents, or they are disenrolled from the school system. Now, that is giving them a window of time for which they would prove their residency to us, or, uh, take it through an appeals process, uh, if they so choose. The last, uh, two pieces here that I wanna highlight, this is more of a workflow of how this happens from the school level on down. We have not had a situation at this point where a suspected non-resident has appealed our decision, uh, to disenroll them from the system, but should that occur, um, we would go through that process, and ultimately, it would lead to a, a letter, tuition reimbursement letter from our Chief Political Officer, if we were to, and deem that superintendent notifying the Board of Education. So, the second piece tonight is really just very brief. Um, we developed, and I say we, the Operations Office, Patty Foley, Elizabeth Roberson, and Joe Rios have done really an exceptional job at managing this project over the course of this year. We have a residency handbook that was developed late summer following the policy rollout, and in this residency handbook, uh, is a table of contents that outlines, um, everything really souped to nuts in terms of what administrators, uh, school secretaries and staff need to know in terms of current law, forms of documentation that can be considered as verification of residency, uh, the, the workflow that I showed you a moment ago, and then forms and templates which include affidavits, et cetera. So, principals all received this training upon their return at the School Leaders Retreat in late August. Uh, we did that in a, about an hour to two-hour period, and then in November, and again in March, on our professional development days, uh, working with the Curriculum Office, we borrowed some time during those days to meet with school secretaries, to overview the handbook, to talk about the process, and to, to truly get them to understand and have clarity around what you do when you suspect that you have somebody that's attending the school that doesn't, that doesn't reside in Norwalk.
Frank, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Just before you move on to the next slide. I know that you'd mentioned the training staff, the PD for principals and secretaries. Is there a way, since we have all of our principals trained in the protocol, as well as, um, principals and secretaries, other staff members? I mean, really, all staff members should be aware of what the proper protocol should be.
Yeah, there is. Um, one way that we can expand this is to, to tap into the CISD meetings, which are monthly. Those are the, the, our administrators that are serving in the curriculum capacity, but certainly come in contact with students on a regular basis. Um, and as we look forward to professional development sessions, um, in the school calendar, we need to look at certified staff and non-certified staff, for that matter.
Okay. I, I think all staff should be trained.
Definitely. Here's the residency data analysis that we were able to put together in the Operations Office. So, prior to, to coming on board with the new Superintendent's Cabinet, um, uh, we would register students oftentimes through the English, English language learning office at Central Office. We've stopped doing that. All registration occurs now at the school, and what we ask the schools to do is to call us anytime any family is unable to provide the requisite verification, residency verification documents that are outlined in the residency handbook. And so, eighty families to date for this school year have started at the school level, but have not had the requisite residency documents to get through that process. So, they are kicked back to the Operations Office, and Liz Roberson, who is bilingual, has been fabulous at working with these families, uh, to discern whether or not they're residents, to take a look at their verification documents. What's very interesting, um, and a pattern that we are certainly keeping an eye on, is that ninety-five percent of the cases that we have seen this year, who are new registration families, are living here legitimately. They are, they are not living here, um, illegally. In other words, we have to be able to educate them, um, and we, and we know that because of the verification that they're providing us. Um, they're coming from places like Honduras and Guatemala, and ninety-five percent of them are English, English language learners. Now, when I say, uh, that they are coming with the residency documentation that is necessary to prove that they do live here in Norwalk, um, you can look down at the next couple of bullets and wonder, how is it that we're coming up with six students at this point who we believe are non-residents? Well, in those cases, we actually don't have a new registration family that has been a non-resident, believe it or not. So, the non-residents that we've identified through our system this year have been currently enrolled students in the Norwalk Public Schools. In other words, they enroll in Norwalk Public Schools either using a fake address or an actual address, but at some point move their residency in the process of the time that they are living in Nor, or attending school in Norwalk, move to a town outside of Norwalk, and continue to, uh, attend school. So, Arti?
Just a quick question. How many students does the eighty families represent?
Those, eighty students.
Eighty students, okay.
That should say eighty students. So, the six students not new to the district, uh, that we have been able to, through our combined, um, investigation at the school level and the district level, have found that three of those, three of those students are actually being disenrolled right now, um, and the actual cutoff date for which we will be disenrolling them is March 24th, if they do not provide us with, uh, verification of residency, and also do not take us up on an appeals process, which they have the right to do. And then we have three students who are... And then we have three students who are also living outside of Norwalk, but in checking with the McKinney-Vento Act and the homeless laws, we realize that they are considered to be living in transition housing. So we have, so one example is, we had a family who tragically lost their home in a fire earlier this year. They have a long history of documentation that they've been living in Norwalk, but their temporary housing is outside of Norwalk at this point. So in a case like that, what we have done in operations is, we've met with them, we've reviewed the case, we've extended to them a deadline by which they need to show us permanent residency in Norwalk after a certain period of time of transition housing. And then they're allowed to return, then they're allowed to maintain their regular status. If they aren't able to prove to us that they have found permanent residency status in Norwalk by the end of this school year, we have explained to them that they're going to be disenrolled as well.
Frank, are you talking about by the end of June?
The end of June of '17. So, six cases in total. Our private investigator has been involved in three of those cases, where this includes going out to the home, taking a look at the dwelling, ensuring that the dwelling resembles the type of place where adolescent is actually spending time there. And the private investigator has also done two observations of both of our train stations, one at East Norwalk, one at South Norwalk, made several appearances there to get a lay of the land, to get a feel for who's coming off the trains, and what we have seen in the case of East Norwalk, there was one situation that led to an investigation. Otherwise, we're seeing no problems there. At the South Norwalk train station, his intelligence was telling us that students that were getting off the school bus at that, at that moment, at the start of school, were getting right on the CGS buses on the days that he was here. We want to continue to randomly do these sorts of visits within the confines of our financial, you know, our financial ability to fund the investigations.
Frank, thank you. I did just want to clarify one thing. There have been a number of comments that I've seen in social media on various different news sources when it comes to this type of policy, and I think that there, I just want to get it on the record, that when we're talking about the residency policy, this has nothing to do with documentation status as a citizen here in the country, let alone Norwalk. This is specifically referring to anybody that does not have a physical residence in Norwalk, thus leading to being a taxpayer of some sort or another.
That's correct. That's the Board of Education's responsibility, to determine that they're residing in the town in which the education is, the service is being provided, and to stop at that point.
So, just again to clarify, we are not targeting undocumented immigrants. It's just what I wanted to have you specifically say.
That's correct. In fact, to, you know, just to reiterate the point that I made earlier, what we're seeing in the 80 students that came here as new registration students is that they can all prove that they live here.
Mm-hmm.
Now, whether or not they're living here legally or illegally is not for us to determine, but we can determine that they're, that they're here, living here most of the time. Having said that, what I'll do is, I'll skip down to the last bullet, which I think...
Frank, there was a question here.
Oh, which, you want to hold that one? I want to just really quickly, to piggyback on that, we look at the third point, when I think about next level of work for the city of Norwalk. As I said, we're learning that new registrants are almost always able to verify residency. To date, our non-resident students are NPS-enrolled, who have moved out of Norwalk. We should reconsider having existing students reregister during, at some point during their experience in the district. Now, last year, when we went through the policy revisions, Heidi and our team, we tossed around the idea of having an interval or two at some point in the K-12 experience, where regardless of whether you're a Norwalk resident, longtime Norwalk resident, or just moving, just moved to town a year ago, two years ago, that when you hit a certain grade, maybe it's eighth into ninth, or fifth into sixth, or first into second, that we ask everyone to reregister, even if they are a Norwalk resident. And we say this because what we have found this year is that it is our existing students that are, that are actually non-residents, and not the flow that we're seeing from South America and other places. I actually thought the third, the third bullet was the second bullet. So to go back to Eric's point, this point about exploring and collaborating with planning and zoning, I don't think it hurts for the Board of Education, who has information in terms of where students are residing and the addresses that were provided. We don't need to provide detailed student information to planning and zoning, but one example would be if we notice an address continually being utilized as a residence verification, we believe that a collaboration with planning and zoning would be a smart thing for the city, because it would allow, it would inform the city, flag the city that the potential exists, where we have multiple families living in one dwelling, which is unhealthy, unsafe, and without providing any student detailed information. And then the first point is to closely monitor homeless cases, so that we can eliminate situations where transition living situations outside of Norwalk do not become permanent. So without any system in place, districts that have no system, that can verify that at some point, a family, for whatever reason, has become homeless, without a system in place, that family could just maintain that homelessness status, live outside of Norwalk for a period of years, and continue to enroll here. And so that's why we think it's extremely important to keep a close eye on our homeless population. Patty Foley is our homeless liaison for the district. She has a comprehensive list of our homeless students, and we want to make sure that the homeless families understand that as they're in that transition process, they need to be thinking about finding a permanent status in Norwalk.
Frank, a couple of questions. So, of, when we enroll a student from overseas, do we require them to have a social security number?
We don't. We also can't require that they have immigration papers, but the vast majority of them hand us immigration papers. And we have that paperwork. We don't ask, legally, we can't ask, but more times than not, we get immigration paperwork from those that are coming from outside of the United States.
And on the homeless, I know there's this act that kind of tells us what we need to do, but I have heard from some of our staff that, you know, these kids will say they're homeless, but they're like living in a shelter in Bridgeport. What's our responsibility there?
So we have a case now where we have a family that's residing outside of Norwalk. We've inquired with the state about their case, their current case. State believes, based upon the evidence that has been provided to us, they are indeed homeless, but that there's a window of time for which that family needs to be able to show us that they've transitioned out of that temporary housing and into a permanent location in Norwalk. We've in turn explained that to the family, and have set a date by which they need to be able to show us that they are living in Norwalk. Otherwise, as the, as the current district, we have to then be able to tell them, we're disenrolling them, unless they, of course, want to appeal, and then we actually tell them, the district, that they should be enrolling in. That's part of our responsibility.
Because there was recently, I don't know, there's some big joint, not speech, but something, you know, the governor was commending how we've built all this new housing, and how much Connecticut's lowered the homeless rate to one of the lowest in this country, or something like that. And so, really kind of suggesting that there are very few homeless, because of all this housing, so that this should be less of an issue, but it sounds like not.
So, the McKinney-Vento Act, which is the federal act that you referred to, you know, the definition of homeless is not that you are without a home or living without a car, it's that you're in transition. You know, the example of having a fire in your home is a very good example. So we have this family, they're Norwalk residents, the house burns down, they're now living in Bridgeport. Under the McKinney, it's, so it's not that they're homeless, they're, they're living somewhere, but it's considered under the McKinney-Vento Act transitional housing. So, under the act, generally, the student has the right to finish the school year, and then, you know, during that period of time, six months or so, they need to either decide, you know, is Bridgeport going to be their permanent residence, or are they moving back to Norwalk, and can they prove residency? The problem has been, as Frank pointed out, is we haven't had a system for this, so initially, you know, several cases were found where a person might have been homeless at one point several years ago, but because this was not checked, they just continued in that, in that status. So, you know, we have a much better handle on these situations as a result of your policy and the good work that the operations has done, office has done implementing it.
And one last thing, Frank, I remember when we worked on the policy, I thought we had seriously talked about these intervals where we would have people reregister, and I remember we talked about like going into high school in ninth grade, and did we decide not, did we, Heidi, decide not to do that? I can't remember now.
Just before school started, the decision was made that we probably didn't have the people to start the school year at the school level or the central office to reregister thousands of students, but it is something worth considering.
I think once we, not pilot this, but we've been working on this, maybe in six months or something, we might be able to reevaluate it again and figure out if we need to do that.
We're still going to have that problem, that we don't have the manpower.
Well, we do, we do need to think about either repurposing existing staff or budgeting in what would be 18, 19 for a small, you know, staff that would be able to do their registration.
Plus, schools are not trained in the system, which, you know, is very different than what we had before, so I think capacity for reregistering, you know, probably the logical place to do it would be between eighth and ninth grade.
And just at least start it there.
I think we have much more capacity now to do that than a year ago.
Frank, can I ask you a couple of questions, a couple of quick questions?
Sure.
Before you go. First of all, thank you for this, because I think we were all interested in having you come back and kind of relay what we've done in the past and what we've been successful at, but the inquiry form, all of our schools have it. They have several copies of that at each school?
They do. In fact, they have this residency handbook, which we developed and distributed to principals and to school secretaries.
Okay.
That inquiry form is included in this packet.
And all staff can look at that if they, if needed, okay? As far as the six cases, were the majority of them in high school, elementary, middle? Do we have an idea?
That's a good question. It's mixed. More have been elementary.
Right.
But we've had a couple of cases of high school.
Shirley has some questions.
And I just want to ask one more, can I just have one more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can we get an update, if it's possible? I'm thinking April, May, June, we're off the summer, July, and August, maybe September, to come back to see where we're at on this?
Sure.
Just a quick update.
I think, I think it makes sense to recap at the end of a full school year, look at, take a look at what the data looks like. This, you know, this also signals for us, 80 new students that have enrolled in the school system that we didn't anticipate, coming from outside the country. It shows, you know, the strain that the Board of Ed has placed under.
Thank you.
Shirley?
Yes. Can you talk a little bit about the appeal process and what it entails?
Sure. I will flip to...
Find out, you know, is it like a group of people who are, you know, from the school, or is it a separate, you know, group that determines?
Yep. So, I'm going to read to you an example of a letter, a typical letter, that somebody who has gone through an investigation process, we've determined is not a non-resident. So the first portion of this explains that they have the right to a hearing that is held at the, at here, City Hall. The hearing is held, is heard by our expulsion hearing officer. So, the board designates an individual to hear the case, so that would be Larry Caffaro. He would hear the family's case, he would hear the district's collection of evidence. It's likely that we would either have the private investigator present, or the private investigator's collection of artifacts and documentation, which would include video and the, I actually don't have a copy of the letter, I thought I did in my packet here tonight, but there is also a second appeal that the family can initiate if the local level hearing turns out in a way that is unfavorable to the, to the family. There's a final state level before a final determination is made. Now, the downside to the family that is a non-resident for going through that process is, they would be faced with the tuition charges that they would have incurred over the time that they have essentially stolen, if you will, the services of the public school district in, in the town that they're not living in. So when we do our letter and say, "You have such and such a time before we will disenroll you, you have the right to have an appeal hearing take place during this time if you believe that you can prove otherwise." Nowhere at that point do we say, "We're, we're going to charge you for tuition," but once we go to that hearing level, that's where that would set in, and we haven't actually gotten that far yet with a case.
Okay, so, um...
Artie?
Oh, and...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. When you get a chance, can you send us a copy of the PowerPoint?
Sure. You should have...
You should have it in front of you.
Should have it in front of you.
No, it's a little...
It's hard to see though, it's very tiny though.
Is it small? We can send that to you electronically as well, if you'd like.
Yeah, that would be good.
If you got a magnifying glass.
Yes.
It's here, but it's impossible to read.
Right, and I have glasses.
Saving, saving paper.
I don't think she has. That's an extra that...
Yeah, it's there, it's just, she has it, super, super tiny.
You have it, okay.
You need your microscope.
It's just, it's...
You need to get your microscope.
Exactly.
Yes.
I'll provide microscopes next time. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
I have, sorry. I have an oddball question. We have some families who live right on the border, and I mean literally on the border. Half of their house is in Wilton, let's say in half are in Norwalk. I know one family specifically off of Super 7 by Old Sierra Road. They wanted to send their kids to Wilton, because they pay Wilton taxes, and Wilton treats them as a non-resident. Do we have a policy like that? And I'm not asking that we should, I just want to know if we have some...
We don't have a policy like that, but Tom Mooney's Guide to Residency deals with a situation like this. The law has evolved over time. The law used to focus on where the child slept at night, that's evolved into where the child lives.
You mean if the bed is in Norwalk or...
It used to be with a master bedroom.
That's correct.
Wow.
Now that, now that is, that is no longer, and the law is much broader than it, than it has been, and with so many families separated or divorced, and the courts wanting for children to be able to have a, an experience with both parents, it becomes very difficult to manage or prove non-residents when you have a student that's living in, with two, with two parents in different locations that may be inside your town and outside your town.
But I will tell you a story that happened to a client of mine. They were from, they lived in Norwalk, kids went to Norwalk schools, they then bought a piece of property in Wilton, were paying taxes in Wilton, they were rebuilding the house, so they stayed in their Norwalk house, and she drove them to Wilton every day. Wilton triggered a private investigator on them, said, "You're not living in Wilton, we don't care if you own this house, whatever, it's not livable, your kids are sleeping in Norwalk, you can't send your kids to Wilton." So...
Tough.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's Frank.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Frank.
So, our next item is an important item for Norwalk High School. We have a great Norwalk High School night tonight, with the cheerleading team being recognized, as well as this next report. I have made... as this next report. I have made the board aware on a couple of occasions that we were pursuing a partnership with CPTV as they acquired and will move an installation and have a presence in Fairfield County. This is what is being referred to as the Innovation Center. And thanks to the great leadership at Norwalk High School that we have in our, with our teachers and administrators, in the journalism and TV programs, which are a real strength of the school, we have the opportunity now to develop this into a full-fledged pathway. A pathway by definition is a set of four or five related electives, not random electives, but related electives that lead to a capstone experience, which could be a hundred and twenty-hour internship, or the application of the pathway classes to real work and creation of something as well. So Ralph has been working with our great educators at Norwalk High School. We are close enough to this at this point to be able to give you a report in terms of what has been accomplished and what we can expect going forward.
Thanks, Dr. Adamowski, and good evening, everybody. Really happy to report out on this, and I'm just gonna talk for about two minutes and then invite everybody else up to really talk about the program, the whole team at Norwalk High. So I'm gonna talk about it from the thirty-thousand-foot view and the partnerships piece. If you look in our strategic operating plan, Goal Six talks about the idea of partnerships. And when we think of partnerships, a lot of times people think that it's just foundational partnerships, so, you know, funding coming in. But it truly is, partnerships really does mean partnerships with the industry, with industry in town, with other community organizations. And this is one example of that, as well as some other ones that have been built up over the last few years. Predominantly NECA is a good example of that, the Medical Academy as well, at Bryan McMahon, that's coming into play. But this is now just another iteration of another type of partnership and another pathway that's gonna be available for our students. So, basically, this part, this whole partnership and this pathway had been started, in a sense, the seeds for it had started many, many years ago with Kyle and a number of the other teachers over at Norwalk High. And they're gonna talk about that in just a moment. As we were moving forward and we knew that Connecticut Public Television was gonna be moving into Norwalk, we started having conversations with them and developing the same type of partnership which they have developed in one of their schools in Hartford, which was the Journalism and Media Academy, which is a magnet school in Hartford. Now, our program doesn't look exactly the same as that, but it's the same kind of an idea of a partnership between Connecticut Public Television and the high schools in order to earn certification and have a pathway and a series of related courses, as Dr. Adamowski mentioned. We're currently working with Connecticut Public Television, and Jackie's gonna come up in just a moment, talk to you a little bit more in detail about what we're doing with curriculum and professional development, and building out the program, and building out the curriculum over the next few years. We're actually also building a new media lab in Norwalk High, and that'll be launched by September of two thousand seventeen, so students will be working in this media lab. In two thousand eighteen, nineteen, the building should be prepared, the actual studio that we'll have with Connecticut Public Television, that should be in place, and we'll actually move forward into that building as being, in a sense, an annex to Norwalk High and use that on a regular basis as well. So the next steps that we're gonna be having over the next couple of years from the partnership standpoint is, we're gonna be having some closer conversations with North Community College. We've been partnering with them on a number of different projects. Obviously, we've done it with NECA, as I mentioned, the Medical Academy, and we'll be continuing to do that here in enhancing this program to look at dual credit opportunities, look at opportunities beyond just the current certification project that's gonna be in place. And I think, I think I caught everything that I need to, I wanted to talk to you about the partnerships piece. Yeah, I think the only other option that I wanna make sure that I mentioned too is that for the, for this current year, students are, the students that are enrolled actually in Norwalk High School, will be students in this program. In the eighteen, nineteen school year, we'll be looking to open this up as a choice program as well as we move forward, so that all students ideally have an opportunity to go into the program, as well as the Medical Academy over at Bryan McMahon at that same time. So with that, let me introduce our fearless leader, Reginald, Mr. Roberts, kinda come up and introduce his staff.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzese, Dr. Adamowski and the board, thank you for having us. So let me introduce our team, Mr. Kyle Seberg, Mr. Rob Carl, Ms. Arons, she's the housemaster. By the way, Kyle runs BCN, Mr. Seberg, and Mr. Carl runs our newspaper. Jackie, as you know, is one of our housemasters, she used to be English Department Chair, and Ms. Milne, one of our English teachers. Duffy Franco is an art teacher, and we also have Anthony Pagano, who's not here tonight. So this is the team who's been working for about a year and three months on this particular project. And some of them were part of the other team when we were working on our arts exploration as well. So we have a video for you, and I'm gonna turn it over to Kyle. You also have a pamphlet in front of you, or you should have one, which is something they also created, and I was gonna take it from here.
This is really easy, right?
Yes.
Yeah, this starts this.
Over the last eleven years, Norwalk High School teachers and students have built a foundation that makes us ready to launch the Digital Media Pathway. Students at Norwalk High School have been producing a school newspaper, creating documentary films, digital animation, broadcast journalism, and film studies. All of this interest has led to a natural progression for a partnership with professionals that will give the NHS students the chance to take their work to the next level. The Norwalk High School Digital Media Pathway is a partnership with Connecticut Public Broadcasting Network and Norwalk Public Schools. This partnership will allow students to learn using a hands-on approach, allow them to become lifelong learners, all the while exposing them to programs that will enable them to enter college or career with mastery of industry-standard computer software. The students enrolled in this program will have the opportunity to produce content in a variety of ways, working hand-in-hand with NHS teachers and professional partners. Through courses like Advanced Media Studies, Graphic Design, Journalism, Audio Design, and Film Production, the hands-on learning will allow each student to choose which direction their learning will lead them. Please support and welcome to the Digital Media Pathway at Norwalk High School. Your story, your way.
Take a look at the directions here, sir. Will that go? Uh, that's, that's good, I think. Good to get the message.
Good evening. I'm Kyle Seberg, I'm a teacher at Norwalk High School, so I'm the project lead, if you will, for the teachers and the administrators who are pushing this program. So I'm really here to answer questions that you may have. The brochure, or pamphlet, if you will, that was created in the journalism room, putting together, kind of explaining the birth of this and the idea of where we wanna go with this. And just so you're aware, the partnership with Connecticut Public Broadcasting Network and the idea that, why we're running next year and not going offsite, it's not ready yet, but we felt that the iron was hot and we needed to strike. We had to decide about subject selection, the kids are, in that process already. So we have students signing up for the pathway, and so we felt if we didn't do this, then we may lose some of those kids. We, in all of these classes that we already offer at Norwalk High, there's fourteen of them that make them eligible for the program. One of the other things that, when we looked in Hartford, and they said, "Hey, we're gonna help mold this to fit Norwalk," we met, we talked about this idea of an application for the program. So there's an online application that the students, once they sign up, will then fill out the application. And that idea, we thought was essential, because now we're gonna have the fifty or sixty students initially that really wanna be there, and are gonna take it to that next level. So, we have students who are savvy with this. The idea that we can work with professionals, we can get training, they can get training, they can get real, like, certification in all these different programs, is something that is exciting to all of us. So, I mean, that's, in a nutshell, this really does explain, one of the other items that we have is the idea that the students in this pathway are still Norwalk High students. I've been here for twenty-four years, you've been paying my salary, thank you. The idea that, you know, I'm a coach in the building, I need to be back. So if I go offsite, I want those students to still be in band, and still be on the sports team, and still do all the extracurricular activities. So we've really felt that designing a schedule that would allow them to do this, expose them to all these different things, and whether they become journalists, or photographers, or they do something completely different, the skills they're gonna learn in this will help them do that. And that's our other thing, is we're not training mini-little journalists, no offense to the journalists in the room, but we want kids that can, you know, call the mayor, call the superintendent, have a conversation, communicate through email, just do all the things that you need to do to be a functioning adult. So, I think Jackie has some things that she may talk about, but I'll kinda stay in the background if you have any question, or you have a question now?
Yeah, just, yeah, a simple question. I see that it starts with juniors and seniors.
Yes.
Are there any prep classes that are being, that are in place for freshmen or sophomores so they can get prepared for something like this?
Yeah, if you look, the classes that we list in there are also, we have, not to belittle other programs, but in our Program Studies Guide, we're saving the best for last, we're the last page. And that explains, too, there's fourteen classes that we already have at Norwalk High School that have been in existence or been created by a lot of the teachers here. Those are the classes that the kids could take. Freshman year is difficult, because freshman year, they're full.
Coming, right.
Like, they've, they've got a full schedule. So, like, sophomore year, they may be able to take, we felt, like, at least one of those classes, whether it's a full-year course or a semester course, to have that at least show some interest.
Right.
And then that idea of then, one of us, some would have had a student, so when they apply, you can be like, "I don't know," or, "Yeah, okay," or, you know, that kinda deal.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Eric?
Ms. Arons.
Good evening, everyone.
Kyle, I think there's a couple more questions.
Another question, okay.
Sorry, Mr. Seberg, before I let you go, number one, I do wanna start off by saying that it's really remarkable to see this progress happening. It wasn't long ago that I was a student of Mr. Franco, and many of my friends had Ms. Milne, and I would see you as well walking the halls when I was there in graduate of two thousand and two class. With that being said, I do wanna ask one bit of concern that I have, and don't, and forgive me for seeming cynical, but the partnership with Connecticut Public Broadcasting, would that be impacted if on a federal level the cuts to public broadcasting continued to go through? Could this dampen our relationship, and if so, do we have an alternative to help with funding?
I think that's twofold, and Ralph can answer part of that.
As far as I know, no, I don't think that actually this would have any impact. I mean, the funding that's been put into place and the way that the center is going to be built is, Jerry Franklin at the Connecticut Center for Public Television has developed this as self-sustaining. So there's gonna be five different components within its structure. One of them actually is a for-profit production company, which will help fund all the other programs that are going on there. He's doing a program for wounded warriors to get them into broadcast and media production. He needs his own area in there as well. He's developing a think tank, an incubator environment for new startup companies as another option there. So, all of those different things will keep this sustaining and on a regular basis, so it's not based off of just federal funding.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Kyle, while you're still taking questions, was there, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'll go first.
Eric, I graduated well before you, but all these great things are happening in Norwalk, so it's like a, really a great time to be a student in Norwalk High School, and all these wonderful things that are happening. What I like also is the hands-on, it's a real hands-on experience. And I know that there was some concern, and you had just mentioned it a couple moments ago, that you're gonna house it two thousand and seventeen. Do we know where in Norwalk High School where this will be?
Sure. Yeah, so, when we found out there was a delay, and then there was another delay, what we all said was, "We need to go." Well, there's a, the old math resource center, which is now the social studies bookroom, was a computer lab, and we actually, Mr. Carl and I spent some time there this year due to some mold issues. We converted it to a studio at that point, kind of ad hoc, and we were kinda sitting there going, "This would be great." So, met with Ralph, met with Bill Hodel, looked at that area, and said, "This could be the..." Because part of the plan was to have something for the kids on their off day that they could use. So if they're on an A day, they're here, they're at Norwalk High, they could have a place. We said, "Why not have that place?" So that, we said, "Let's build it." Now, the fact that we, in that program says we're gonna be offsite, we've talked about the shiny things, we need shiny things for them. The kids are gonna use software that they're not using right now. The equipment we're getting is the same equipment that they will be using offsite. So that, that media lab, and I believe we have a plan for that? Do they have that?
Yeah, so, I mean, we didn't give you the full plan. If I can jump in, you'll hear more about this when we present the alliance funds that will be going up to the state. You'll see that there'll be a couple of lines specifically in there for this classroom, as well as the approval with my capital funds, actually has the computers and a lot of the other equipment included in there, so.
Oh, and I just wanna interject, just one thing, as being a person who's been here for a while, the, this whole process has been so refreshing to literally sit with other teachers, but also administration and facilities and superintendents, and have a conversation and being asked, "What do you guys want?" And, and it may not be, you may not always get exactly what you want, but we're getting a lot of what we're asking for, and that's what we've talked to the kids about. Next year, we may not be offsite, but we have plans to make it just as good, because if you look at what we're already doing, we've all, this has all been done with nothing so far. You know, our budgets for all these classes is, we've gone out and gotten funding. So, that lab is, and Ralph, he's written it in blood, it's gonna happen.
Just one other question, just projecting ahead, when it is offsite, two thousand and eighteen and nineteen, how are you gonna work the bus, I mean, how is that gonna work for...
We've actually already started planning for that, because we were anticipating potentially a January start, and then when that was delayed, we kind of had that planning in there. So we've already been in touch with Joanna, and we've, we've already figured out the kids are gonna have lunch at Norwalk High School, then they're gonna be bussed over, there's transition time, and all of that is in that little pamphlet that we handed out in terms of when they would arrive and when they would leave. And we ensured, as Kyle mentioned previously, we want the kids to be a part of the after-school activities, so we'll make sure that they get back in time for either bus home, or after-school sports practice, band practice, whatever they're doing.
And there's time to plan for that, but at least you have an idea of where...
Exactly, of how that logistically will work out.
And actually, Ralph and I were just discussing this, the fact that we're not going offsite, I've now flipped it, it's a blessing.
It might be a good thing, right.
Because it's gonna give us a year to really figure out everything, and then really go, "Oh, if we were not going across the hall, but we were going ten minutes away with traffic, or it could be more," like, how would that work? So this really, I think, is gonna help us in getting the kids what they need as far as not it being frantic.
And launching it, piloting it now to work out the kinks and things you might need to change or rearrange, I think it's probably a good thing to have that year, time to do that.
Yes. So I'll talk a little bit about the partnership, and I may answer some questions coming up.
Do you have a question, Brian?
Yeah, I just had one question. This building is the, it's the building between the bank and the theater? It's the whole building?
It is the bank, and...
It is the bank.
And the plan is to have it open for eighteen, nineteen?
Yes.
Oh, it is the bank, it's Old Merchants Bank there?
Fairfield County.
Fairfield County Bank, I worked there.
Sorry.
I guess they didn't know that they were closing yet.
I graduated way before.
Now they know, it's on record!
We did visit, we did visit.
Okay, thanks.
All right, please proceed.
So, as we mentioned, our successful launch is really gonna depend heavily upon this media center being up and running, the professional learning for the teachers, as well as the curriculum being developed and the equipment being purchased for the new classes. We have been working with CPTV, their Vice President of Education, Donna Sodipo, and their Director of Education, Paul Pfeffer. We've gone to the Learning Lab in Hartford for a big kind of kickoff meeting, and then we went back for what I would call like an intensive learning walk. We spent the day there. We looked at the facility, and it is state-of-the-art. The classroom looks like something out of Google, like... The classroom looks like something out of Google, like the kids are really going to be besides themselves. It's the way that they have the flexible furniture, that every space can become a working space and a usable space for education. They have all sorts of things where they say they're going to blow us away at, you know, that was then, and now we're going to do Revolution, you know, 2017 and now 2018. So, we're looking forward to that. We were also able to speak to the teachers at JMA. We were able to talk to the professionals, the industry professionals that work for CPTV and work directly with the kids. We were able to speak directly to the kids. So, we had an opportunity to really kind of live in their shoes for a full day of school. And then we also invited both of them back to Norwalk. We did the walkthrough of Fairfield County Savings Bank, kind of laid out what it's going to look like, and it's really a true collaboration. We were able to meet some of the donors that are going to make this possible on the CPBN side. And then we also had Mr. Pfeffer come in and do a learning walk with Norwalk High. So, he was sitting in all our classes, and he was just blown away by the things that we were able to do with the funding that we have. So, that was the beginning of our, basically, our curriculum study and our professional learning of where, what we need to know in order to make these classes move forward. And that's our goal for this April, to begin the training, because the Adobe suite is very complicated, and those of you who are in that field understand that there's multiple software programs that people have to learn, and there's such a learning curve, it takes some time. And yes, we're in the basic stage of it, but we need to keep going into the intermediate and advanced skills in order to move these classes forward. So, that's what we're going to be working in collaboration with this team, using our rigorous curriculum design template, and because, again, we're working with juniors and seniors, want to make sure that we embed our common core college and career readiness standards in there. We want to make sure that our SAT strategies are embedded within our classroom structure so that we're supporting the kids as they're moving through high school. And then as we get into year two, because year one will be the opportunity of a foundational course and some semester work, but as we get into year two, we want to look at capstone opportunities for internships through CPTV, and also opportunities for AP coursework. There are several AP art classes they could take, there's AP capstone classes that we could kind of embed within this, and as Ralph mentioned earlier, the NCC connection for some of our kids who are truly going into that field beyond Norwalk High School. So, that's kind of where we are right now in terms of getting ready for a curriculum development. And in terms of professional learning, CPTV is going to partner with us to, one, train our teachers, whether it's on their site, our site, some web-based information, some workshops. So, we really need all of those pieces to be put together from now until the end of the summer to make sure that we're ready to go for September when the kids are ready to go.
Thank you. Shirley, then Eric.
I'm sorry. When the curriculum is all put together, will there be an opportunity for it to come through the curriculum committee as like a little presentation so we can see to make sure that everything is being covered?
Absolutely. Yes, especially since it's going to be such a collaboration with the industry professionals and the teachers, and we're all coming from various disciplines, so I really do think it's going to be a state-of-the-art kind of collaborative opportunity for us.
Right, so that way we can, you know, really review it and make sure that we're aligning with everything that we need to be aligned with.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Eric? Thank you again so much. This really is so exciting. The one question I have about the transportation piece, so once the offsite location is open, and by the way, I'm very familiar with the inside of that building, we're very fortunate to be getting that space, it is fantastic, I can't wait to see it turned into the site. The concern I had, and just wanted to ask you if you thought about it, is with the transition time that you mentioned, is that potentially going to cut away from educational time for those students?
So, right now, what we have planned is for a half an hour for lunch, and that they would immediately get onto the buses to go downtown, because there is no lunch facility for them there. So, at that point, what we're looking at really is a 60-minute class and I believe a 45-minute class, so it's kind of within our old structure, it's in our little handout.
Yeah, we kind of pieced together what we thought.
If you look, like, page two?
Not having ridden a bus over there and knowing how long that will take and where it's going to drop off, but that's kind of the plan, and I think like even doing a dry run here would be a good idea.
Because my thought was, you know, wrapping up lunch, getting those kids together, getting them onto the bus, getting the bus closed, getting it through any potential traffic if there's still construction going on downtown, and then the unloading and then reloading it, because I did see here that it's two sessions, so there would be 25 and 25.
It's an A day, so we can accommodate more students, and ultimately, we can accommodate as many students as we would like, so the program really has the opportunity to grow from 60 students to 120 students, and even more if we add morning sessions, because right now, we're only going in the afternoon. So, you would see on an A day, the facility is only going to be constructed for a maximum of 60 students at a time. So, on an A day, we can have 60 students go. On a B day, we can have 60 students go for a total of 120 students. But if we double that, you see where I'm going, that takes more staff and everything else, but, you know, for us, you know, just to get started, this is where we are. And this bus traveling situation is the same situation we have with NECA kids going over to NCC. So, it's something that's already in place, we, even this year, we had Pathways kids coming to Norwalk High, so it's something that we do. And I think, again, curriculum setting up and making sure that you're on target with those things, make sure that you maximize those educational opportunities with the time that you have.
Yeah, because, I'm sorry, Shirley, because, again, the concern I had was it's not a traditional classroom necessarily, there's a lot ongoing, and, you know, to break down from a production situation or whatever happens to be going on. I think it will work, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that was on the foresight kind of going forward as it could potentially be an issue?
I think the one great thing is that the Hartford model has been running for a while, and the CPBN partners that we've been working with, that's a main focus. And also, when we had conversations with their JMA administration, talking about some of those challenges that they faced, all of these things are kind of incorporated into our plan, not to say that, you know, this is what it is, but when we get into it, we may have to revise again, but it's something that we're at least considering.
Fantastic. I look forward to hearing how this goes, it's exciting.
Yeah, we're excited, too.
And speaking of transportation, the cost, will that be part of the grant, or will it be part of a line item that's in the budget?
So, I think I can answer that. It has been mentioned to you that next year, 60 students would have this opportunity. They will all be Norwalk High School students, and most of the startup costs have, has been covered through our budget. But the following year, when the program is open to all students, it will qualify for the magnet funds of $1,000 per student, and that's how these expenses are going to be paid, because there are a whole set of expenses. There are fees to CPTV for its staff that are dedicated to these students, and there's transportation, there are fees for the certifications, you know, it's like NECA. So, that would be the plan for the second year, and that would be the funding source.
Thank you.
Anything else, Artie?
Not a question, just a statement. I've been interviewed by your crew several times, and I will say they were very professional, very knowledgeable, I mean, they knew where to put the mics, how to, you know, wire the mics so they can't see it, great questions, and they covered all of our events, like we did with the, when we brought that gentleman over to the high school. They covered it so well, and they call up, they follow up, really, I'm very impressed by it, and I don't know if any of you have seen the video that he sent out, but the newsroom, I know you do green screen?
Yes.
But the newsroom is amazing, and I think with News 12 leaving, you guys are the only real locals. But really, just my hat's off to you guys, really, great work.
Thanks.
Good work.
I just want to address one issue that Jackie talked about with the capstone. We have another hat that Rob, Carl, and I wear is Project Explorer, we're the co-advisors for that program. And so, that idea, we have a lot of ideas of how we can incorporate what all of these classes are going to do to allow those kids to create an independent study project, a capstone, whatever that may look like, tailoring it to those kids. And we're in the process now of trying to acquire some other staff in the building to help us with that, because the capstone is going to be a graduation requirement, so what is it going to look like? So, that, it's just a lot of things, like your question about transportation is a great one, like, those are the things that we're trying to figure out. All those anticipate some of those issues that may occur.
And there's just a lot of opportunities there. We're also going to be, through the CPBN people, we're also going to be in collaboration with the theater, which will be awesome for our kids, they'll get to perform on that stage, we'll really get in there, and hopefully, there'll be some internship opportunities for kids who are interested in things like lighting and audio, it's all there. So, I feel like this is the beginning of something that's going to blossom into a lot of opportunities for our kids, for all kids ultimately, not just Norwalk High School students.
Excellent.
I think it opens up a whole new world for our students, just something else that they can look into, I think it's great. And I think just what, piggybacking on what Eric and we were just talking about before as far as transportation, I think if you do, you have 2018, 19 to get this going, 2017 at Norwalk High School, the 2018, 19 at the other location, the offsite location, so you suggested before having a dry run, I think that would be great to even have students on the bus, just to figure out how much time and making sure it's not taken away from instructional time, but they have enough time to eat lunch at Norwalk High School and then head over.
And that's the fun part, is that we've already started working with Joanna, she's like been in from day one. So, as the building becomes ready, even if it's not ready for class yet, maybe they can go in and see the operations, we can have some visits, so I think there'll be lots of opportunity for an early exposure to what that looks like.
And I think the enthusiasm is contagious, so if it's contagious here in this room, I can imagine how excited the students will be.
It sounds like there's enthusiasm from a potential future student over there, so it's exciting stuff across the board.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to thank everyone who's here tonight. I think our educators at Norwalk High School have really taken this opportunity to run with it and are building it into something that actually exceeded our expectations when we were approached by CPTV over a year ago. So, thank you for great work, and best wishes for the future.
Can we thank also Mr. Roberts? He's here as well.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Roberts. Fantastic, thank you all.
Thanks, everybody. All right, just very, very briefly, the, during our last meeting, or when your last meeting was held, we had, it was earlier in our budget process, since that time, both the capital and operating budgets have been settled, although they are still pending formalization by the Board of Estiment and Taxation. We had a meeting with the Board of Estiment and Taxation a week or two ago, and they were on the same page as the mayor, so we feel that this is, we're at a point now where we can plan for both budgets. So, I just want to confirm with you, the, our budget will represent a 4.5% increase, which is tremendous support from our city, we're grateful to our mayor, City Council, members of the Board of Estiment and Taxation for their support. At many junctures through this process, those groups and individuals cited your strategic operating plan, and the fact that you were following a plan, that the items in the budget directly related to the plan, implementing it, and, you know, the prospect of that was deserving of the city's support. So, the 4.5% increase represents a, an additional increase of 1.3 million, more than the Finance Director recommended when he made his recommendations for 3.7%. We will also need, as part of that, to do a budget reconciliation of 1.3 million. I'm going to recommend to you, given how fluid the state situation now is, that we do that in April, but we do it tentatively. You know, if, you know, we had a little increase in our ECS allocation, it would not be necessary to reconcile. And again, we don't, we don't know, we can hope for the best, we have got a lot of great people working on our behalf to make the ECS fairer to Norwalk and to other cities in our, that fit our profile of a high level of need, as well as higher-than-average property wealth based upon location. So, I would just remind you also that the operating budget assumes that we will be successful in fully mitigating the 8.6 million increase in medical insurance costs, and I want you to be aware that we are well into this process with each of our eight unions at this point. They each have different requirements, different timelines, we are following those carefully, and Shari Sheri is working with our union, the leadership of our unions closely, in order to bring this about. We have one collective bargaining issue related to this, which I will explain to you in executive session later tonight, but at this point, we're on track to bring this about, and everyone's working very hard on it. As Mr. Lyons mentioned earlier in the meeting, the capital budget, which is a five-year budget, is really historic for us. It, in a city that has not built a new school for 40 years or renovated one in 15, we will be building during this period of time two new schools, we will be renovating these new two schools, and we will be providing all the priority one and two repairs and enhancements per the facilities plan to all schools, and there are six schools, including Norwalk High School, which was here tonight, that will receive all recommendations in the plan, which are all the priority one, two, three, and four repairs and enhancements. And so, this is, you know, if you look at, I think we still have a little bit of pain and adjustment to go through to make this work. The very positive thing is that the extent of the reconciliation we have to do is such that we can maintain all the big things which relate to the strategic operating plan in the recommended budget, such as the magnet funding, such as the high school funding, such as summer learning. And in that sense, both the operating budget and capital budgets represent two giant steps, two giant strides toward elevating our schools and becoming the system of schools that our strategic plan envisions when we say we are going to become the best city school system in Connecticut. I want to thank everybody that has played a role in bringing us to this point, both big and small efforts, and thank them for support, collaboration, and the board for your leadership.
Thank you, Doctor.
Yep.
All right, we will proceed now to the action items on the agenda. Item 6, one is the consent calendar. Its consent calendar is number 2A, approval of personnel, 2B, approval of budget transfers, and 2C, which is approval of trips for the Center of Global Studies, one to Montreal and one to Beijing. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? So moved by Brian, seconded by Heidi. It's a discussion. Hearing none, we will proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the consent calendar, please indicate. That is unanimous, thank you. Okay, item three is approval of contract with SNCC for Norwalk Alternative Opportunity Expulsion Program. You want to bring us up to speed on this?
Yeah, I asked Frank to come up on this. This is a program we have been running for two years now. It is, under state law, the requirement that we have to offer continuing education to those students who are expelled during their period of expulsion, it is optional on the student's part, it's whether or not to take advantage of it, but we need to offer it. The program needs to be offsite, since these students have been expelled from school. And I think we had probably our best success with it so far this year, and this is, this is belatedly the agreement with the community center, which is currently housing the class.
That's right, so this year was actually the first year in which we were able to relocate the expulsion program, which was formerly housed at Norwalk Pathways Academy and ran via the ACES program. So, this is year one, it's in the South Norwalk Community Center. Ralph Valenzese and I looked late summer at locations in the city that could accommodate a group of anywhere between six, 15 students that might be expelled at any given time. Kathy Villanueva, who is the Chief Operating Officer over at the South Norwalk Community Center, has been very accommodating. We have a beautiful room that's laid out, we have Chromebooks that have been set up and provided through our tech department. Over the course of this year, we've had anywhere from between five and about a dozen students participating in... participating in their expulsion learning program. This year, we've pieced it together through hires. We have a couple of, one retired, a former Norwalk Administrator, Roger White, who coordinates the program. He's done an excellent job at creating really the conditions for the learning to happen, the reporting to go out to families. And he's helped us secure part-time staff with a special education certified individual, an English certified individual, as well as a math. Our schedule runs four days per week, three hours per day for students. State statute is changing effective July 1 of 2017. School districts will need to provide a five-hour-a-day, five-day-per-week expulsion learning experience for students. So Superintendent and I are currently looking at how we will staff this, this change in the law. We think we can do it through a continuation of support. One of the great things about the current conditions is that it allows a retired administrator, a good quality retired administrator, like Roger White, to be able to do it without exceeding the pension cap for retirees. Next year, we won't, we won't have that luxury, because it'll be a 25-hour-per-week learning experience. So we have some work to do in determining exactly how next year's staffing will look. We feel very good about the location at South Norwalk. It's right on the bus line. And we've heard good things from students and from the staff that have participated in it this year.
Any questions?
I would just point out that Kathy Villanueva is, Catherine is in the audience tonight as a Board Watch volunteer, so keep that in mind as you vote on this.
Frank, it's probably a rhetorical question, but when the state passed this mandate requiring us to provide these services, did they provide us any funding for it? I know, I already knew the answer.
That's right.
All right. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Shirley, question?
When this takes, take place, the 25 hours increase, you will come back to the board and give us an update as to how this is going to pan out once, you know, all of this?
Sure, we can, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, so we can see, you know. Thank you.
Okay, Eric?
I was just going to make a motion.
Oh, okay. Is there a motion approved? Eric moves to approve the contract. Heidi seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the contract? Please indicate. And that is unanimous. Thank you. All right, next is approval of educational specifications for Cranberry School Asbestos Abatement Project. Tom? There he is. See, that thought came fast.
Missing you, Tom.
That was well done.
Missing you too, absolutely. Thank you for having me here tonight. I've got several items on the agenda. The first one is the Cranberry School Abatement Project. This was a project that was funded in the 1617 capital budget in the amount of $300,000. And the Facilities Department is managing this project together with Alan Lowe on the city side. This particular project is eligible for school building reimbursement as a code violation, code improvement project. And so we are requesting your approval tonight of the educational specifications, which, as you probably remember from other discussions regarding facilities, that is one of the steps that's required in order to qualify for state reimbursement. The project itself is an abatement project of primarily floor tile in one entire wing of the building at Cranberry, and also the kitchen, the main office, and the library. This has been a recurring issue for Cranberry, because whenever a group comes in, parent group comes in, wants to do something in any room, invariably, the answer comes back, oh, you can't touch anything with the floor, because the, you know, the asbestos tiles are there, and you have to abate the asbestos tiles before you can do anything else. So this will start to resolve that problem for us, and we think it's, you know, a very worthwhile project. The state reimbursement is projected at the 32%, so it's about a $97,000 anticipated reimbursement. And we would expect then to come back the following year to finish the remainder of the school in the second year. If there's any questions?
Any questions? Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom, there was only one concern I, was brought to my attention, I just wanted to get clarification on the record on it. The timeline that was presented by Bill Hodel mentioned a start date of June 5th, or somewhere around there, to start the process. And I know that that would bump into when school's actually taking place. My understanding is that was a preliminary timeline? I just want to get confirmation that that isn't a fixed start.
Well, clearly, the actual project, no work would start until after school, is that a session?
And no teachers would have to clear out their classrooms or anything? There would be allotted time for them to be able to, you know, finish the school year without interruption?
Right. The projected timeline indicates beginning the project on June 19th.
Oh, I must not have had that. I apologize. I had an old one. Thank you.
Just related to that, this does impact the summer school, school-based summer school. Your April workshop agenda, you will have a presentation on summer learning for this summer, including the school-based summer school. And this year, we're also merging, recommending merging the Special Ed ESY program with school-based summer school. We're all very excited about that. Cranberry will not be available for either of those two things, because the building has to be sealed, and no one can be in the building during the time of abatement, which will take several weeks. So that is all going to be held at Wolf Pit. And both principals are working on that now. We have, we have the room, we have a way of supervising it, and so on. And so Cranberry Summer School will be at Wolf Pit.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Yeah, remember, you did, you made the motion, yes?
No, I will make a motion now.
You wanted to make a motion.
I'll make one now.
Now you're making the motion. Already seconding the motion. Okay. Is there further discussion on the motion for the abatement project? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approval? Please indicate. Unanimous. Thank you.
Tom, if you could stay there for the next two items?
Yeah, you're going to be around for a while here.
Want a cushion for your feet, Tom?
I'm good.
All right, next, five, approval of the installation of solar arrays at Norwalk-Narimac Elementary Schools.
Okay, this is a project that's been, again, a collaboration with the city. The City Council in particular has expressed great interest in moving forward with the installation of solar energy installations, both at city facilities and at Board of Education facilities. Earlier this year, the City Purchasing Department issued an RFP soliciting proposals from solar power development firms. The city went through a selection process evaluating proposals and ultimately selected Green Skies Renewable Energy LLC. The project manager, Megan Ochio-Grosso, did I get that right? Ochio-Grosso is here, and she's available to answer any questions or to provide any additional information that you might have about her firm or the specifics of the proposal. We have included the actual full proposal here for your review. This is, we believe, a win-win situation. There are presently tax credits that are available to help incentivize these types of projects. And as a result, because of the energy, obviously, that's produced by the solar panels themselves, as well as the tax credits, they are able to offer us a rate that is currently set, a fixed rate, for the purchase of electricity at 3.9 cents per kilowatt for a 15-year period. It offsets the generation cost, as well as several, a couple of the smaller pieces of the distribution charge. So the analysis indicates our current cost is about 11 cents per kilowatt for those comparable items. So there's a pretty substantial savings by going forward with this proposal. Based on the assumption of a 2.5% annual increase in, assumed annual increase in electricity costs over the next 15 years, the proposal estimates the savings to the district for the Norwalk High School project would be roughly $41,000 in the first year. And over the 15 years, the savings are projected at $781,000. At Narimac Elementary School, the first-year savings are projected at just under $21,000, with 15-year savings at $394,000. So again, we believe this is a win-win situation for the district. As was discussed earlier, the Facilities Director was very involved in this process all along, and so he is comfortable moving forward with these installations at Norwalk High School and at Narimac. Both of those schools have roofs that are expected to last at least the 15- or 20-year period that this installation would be in place for. So, and that was obviously a consideration for us. I don't know if there's any questions? And again, we do have our Megan here to go into any details.
Brian, and then Eric. Yeah, where was the, how was the 2.5% forecast increase over 15 years derived in electrical costs?
Hi there. We actually got that from the Green Bank. That is the estimates that they use as far as utility inflation.
Okay, is that limited to like public institutions? I'm trying to reconcile this with, I know a personal, you know, I have a commercial electrical accountant, my rate went up 40% last year, maybe 50% the year before. I've seen continued increases in that, in that rate. I know this is DPUC controlled. Do we have some kind of protection from, from those kinds of exorbitant rate increases?
Well, I mean, the protection would be that we keep our rate flat. The 2.5% was put in there just to show you the savings that would be achieved year over year, and...
So the rates, if it went up faster, we'd save more money?
Right.
By comparison, because we're locked in. So the rate went from 11 cents to 20 cents an hour is the basic rate. We're still paying 3.9.
Right.
Right. Yeah, I think the only way you don't save money is if you believed that the regular electric rates were going to drop and drop below 3.9 cents a kilowatt, then you could conclude that, well, no, maybe this doesn't make sense. But I think most people working at it would think that's very unlikely to happen, so.
Eric?
Thank you so much. I do want to commend you, actually. I really did enjoy your packet. It was very well put together. The one part that stood out to me, and I wanted to dig a little bit deeper on it, is the educational component. Specifically, I believe it was the second bullet point, that Green Skies would be happy to support each school in building an educational curriculum around solar and renewable energy. So curriculum isn't free necessarily, depending on what is needed to teach that. Everywhere else, it talks about how you guys provide things at no cost to the district. If we were to move forward with your partnership in doing some sort of renewable energy-focused curriculum, would there be additional funds that Green Skies provides in those cases?
We actually have somebody on staff that handles the educational curriculum when towns or municipalities request that sort of help. His name is Jim Armstrong. I believe he is teaching up in the Magnet Schools in Creck in the Hartford area, and specializes in STEM education. And I believe that I put his qualifications in the RFP response. I'm not...
It's in here somewhere. I'll look through.
It's a big RFP, I don't blame you. But he, we actually have him on staff specifically to work with municipalities to put something together, and that is free of charge.
Fantastic. And I do just want to note that the third bullet point there, which was talking about having the opportunity to bring public speakers in, especially as we just heard from one of our other schools, which is moving into a new dynamic front and different forms of educational offerings, really having that opportunity to have experts in different fields come in. I mean, I think that could be a nice partnership, especially with what you have to offer, so.
Yes, definitely. A lot of the people that work at Green Skies have various backgrounds, and so we can speak to more than renewable energy as well. Happy to.
Thank you.
Sure.
Shirley?
Will there be an opportunity later to expand this to other schools? I know the speaker earlier said it could be more savings, and this is great, you know, that we're having the savings and bringing this in. And I'm just trying to get a grasp on other schools, when, you know, the possibility of having this move on. I guess maybe after a trial period of this, seeing how these two schools work, and maybe in a year, a couple of years.
Mrs. Millsby, the, for the new schools we've built, they will need to meet LEED standards. So they will definitely be candidates, because we want them to be as sustainable, self-sustainable as possible. In terms of the existing buildings, and by the way, this is true of a renovation, is new too. So you could, you could certainly anticipate that those four buildings would be involved. And then in terms of the other buildings, it's a question of whether or not the roof is going to be replaced. And as soon as it is, and we know it'll last 15 to 20 years, that's the time to put the solar panels on.
So it's opportunity for all schools?
Yeah, so I would say, over the next five years, we should have quite a bit of opportunity.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Comments?
I just mentioned that one of the kind of basic educational components that was talked about is what's up on here on the screen. And this would be a display, this is from in Clinton at a school that has solar panels. And the, basically, the display shows you in the top-left corner there, there's the weather. And then just to the right of that is how much power is being generated. And then, so you can understand the concept, below it, that number 978, that's how many 60-watt light bulbs could be powered for a year at eight hours a day by the solar power that's currently being generated. To the right of that is 3,884 trees. That's the equivalent amount of CO2 offset. And then the 123, that's how many tons of CO2 were saved by this generation. At the top, that graph, you can see, that's seasonally, and you can see with the longer days, how the power generation picks up quite dramatically once we get out of the winter. So just thought people would want to see the kind of instantaneous, if you will, educational component of this. That would be in the lobby of each school where we have these panels.
Okay. Heidi?
When will this display, once we get the start of the display, will be up though, correct? So students can see it as they're walking by?
Correct. And I believe there is also going to be one at City Hall as well.
Great, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the installation. Eric moves. Heidi seconds. Any further discussion? I just want to, did want to point out one comment that the speaker beforehand, in her handout and her talk, said that the capital plan that we've approved does not seem to have incorporated energy benchmarking, et cetera. The plan does make a commitment to energy conservation, but of course, you know, the plans at this stage are not construction plans. And as Dr. Adamowski pointed out, by state law requirements, now these buildings must be LEED certified. So the buildings will have energy conservation as a major component of the final design phase. It's just not something that you put into the, you know, the conceptual phase. All right, anything else? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the contract? Please indicate. And unanimous. Thank you.
No, 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 no.
No, I'm sorry. Somebody, I apologize. All right, let's do that again. Hands have to go down after the first one is done?
I want them all down.
Okay. All in favor, please indicate. Okay, I got eight. All opposed, one. Extention's done, okay. Eight to one, and that is approved. Thank you very much. And last on the hit parade here, approval of general improvements to Alliance District School Building Grant application.
Okay, you may remember from last year, the state provided a grant to the Alliance Districts that is being used, or was to be used, for general improvements to school buildings of a type that would not ordinarily be eligible for school building construction grants. So this is a grant specifically targeted to the types of things that the state doesn't normally participate in paying for, like replacing worn-out motors and pumps, and boilers and chillers, and... and chillers and doing other kinds of improvements like lockers and other things in buildings that the state, again, would not normally pay for as part of a school construction project. So the state has announced that there is an additional allocation of funding that's available to Norwalk of $1,080,000. They have put a very quick turnaround time on this. There's an opportunity to submit the first round of funding by March 31st and the second round of funding or second application period, which ends on May 31st, although all funds have to be committed and encumbered by June 30th of this year. So again, it needs to be projects that we're able to move quickly on. So what we put in here, first and foremost, was projects that are in furtherance of the district's strategic operating plan. So what you see in here, large amounts of money directed toward the project you heard about earlier tonight, the Norwalk High School Media Lab. And the funding to construct that media lab is being requested in this grant program. The Teach to One program and the expansion of the Teach to One program at Nathan Hale Middle School, the furniture and other upgrades, carpeting, lighting and so forth, that's necessary to convert the additional classroom space for Teach, to accommodate Teach to One, is in here, as well as the Learning Commons, which is really part of the conversion of Teach to One at Nathan Hale. Also in here is funding for the Dyslexia Lab. And that is, again, one of the strategic initiatives in terms of building more in-house capability in special ed. This would be a partnership with, I believe, is it Fairfield University? Fairfield University. So those are the most important items that are in here. You also will see in here, other items that were identified by Bill Hodel and the Facilities Department as items that he believes are critical repair and replacement items like the hot water boiler at Bryan McMahon, replacing variable frequency drives at Bryan McMahon, replacing sewage ejector pump at Bryan McMahon, replacing cooling tower at Norwalk High School and chillers at Norwalk High School, and a hot water storage tank at Norwalk High School. So some, those are some of the other major improvements. Finally, we have included in here the replacement of the retractable bleachers at Norwalk High School, which was identified by Reginald Roberts as a high priority project that he felt should be incorporated into this plan for Norwalk High School. And funding at Wolf Pit to deal with some exterior issues with the entryway, which is deteriorated and as a safety concern, a tripping hazard, as well as repaving the parking lot, which again is one of our, is in poor condition, so.
Okay. Any questions? Shirley?
The district needs for furniture and equipment upgrades for $98,000, can you give me a general idea? Does that cover the entire district or?
It covers specific needs at specific schools that have been identified. One of the things actually I should have mentioned is we did include in this request four dishwashers. And that, I think, was significant in it relates to some of the discussion we've had relative to food service and the plan to eventually move the district away from plastic disposable utensils and to using silverware. And so we've identified four schools that are ready to make that switch and we'd like to pilot it in four schools to see how it works. So we did include money for the dishwashers at four schools, carpet upgrades. You know, I didn't bring the detailed list. There is a detailed list and I'd be happy to send it to you. I just don't have the whole list in front of me.
I believe-
Thank you.
If I can, I believe Bill Hodel identified retractable lunch tables as part of that line item?
Yes, yes.
Where we have some schools where they don't stay down or they actually pop up when kids sit on them, so it's a little dangerous. I know that's part of it.
Yeah, we're generally trying to actually get away, completely get away from the retractable tables where we have cafeterias that serve solely as cafeterias. And those schools where we still have cafeteria-gymnasium combination rooms, then we've got some schools that have retractable tables that are many, many, many years old and are really becoming dangerous, so.
You have to send the board, you know, that and they'll be fine.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the general improvements. Eric moves. Brian seconds. Any further discussion? I will comment this, that I'm pleased that the thinking here was not simply to, you know, randomly throw the money around. You clearly have been guided by looking at what's in the facilities needs study and, you know, trying to keep consistent with long-term planning instead of just using it as money that we're going to spray around and get nothing done for it. So this is a good use of the funds. All right. We will proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the general improvements grant application, please indicate. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Again, another item for you, Tom.
Okay.
February 2017, monthly financial report.
Okay. We are now 66.6% of the way through the fiscal year and 60% of the way through the school year. In total, we've spent approximately 57% of the district budget. So we are at a high level, on track, and don't believe that there are, you know, serious issues in terms of not being able to live within the budget that's been provided to us. In terms of drilling down a little further, the wage accounts, salary accounts at this point are 53% expended, which is slightly below where we would expect at this time of year. After adjusting for money that's in the final line item, the 150 line item, the 1.3 million is actually the special ed development fund money that was appropriated this year to be carried forward for next year. So actually, the adjusted spend rate at this point is about 54%, but still below the amount that we would generally expect. So we're in good shape on the wage accounts.
I was actually going to ask you about that, because, you know, we've got the agreement with the city, the three-year agreement, that requires, you know, careful balancing of accounts to make sure that that money gets spent for the stuff it's supposed to be spent on. And are you comfortable that where the budget looks like, we're going to be able to comply with that?
Yes, yes. On the special ed development fund, and yeah, I'm comfortable with where we are in the special ed development fund. We had a meeting with the special ed committee on that last month and we're going to be coming back again, I think, in April to update the committee again. But yeah, I'm comfortable where we are on that and that we've reserved the money that needs to be carried forward into the following year. So that money is set aside in its own account and, you know, can't be touched essentially.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Other accounts, you know, we've talked about before. We are addressing the, some of the substitute accounts. There were actually transfers that were on your agenda earlier tonight to address the substitute accounts, as well as to address longevity. Longevity is a, is a one-time expense that's paid in November, December each year. And so we don't expect any further expenditure out of the longevity account. Unemployment is also an account that's running high. And again, we, on your transfer agenda earlier tonight, you did approve some transfers into unemployment. Other professional technical services on page three, which is primarily our special ed expenses for contracted services. And you'll see that that is running high year-to-date and we have been monitoring that very closely. We did include it on your agenda, your transfer agenda for earlier tonight, were a number of transfers into that account. And there will be more transfers that we will require as we, you know, approach the end of the fiscal year into that account. But we do expect that we will be able to find the money within our existing appropriations to cover the amount that's necessary that we need to transfer into the contracted services account. I think as I previously reported, the good news we have on particularly the out-of-district tuition in total is in fact running at or below the budget amount. So that is certainly welcome news, although, you know, we do have some still, you know, some budget issues on the other, the contracted services, at least with respect to out-of-district tuition. That now appears to be, you know, pretty much where we would, running where we would expect it to run.
And I'll comment that, you know, that's after a 50% increase over the previous four years. So that's a major success point for us with moving forward with the spend work.
Right. And property services, we're right on budget at 60%. So in total, we're in good shape in the various facility accounts. And I already mentioned the 500 series accounts. And again, we've got a good handle on where those accounts are coming in and feel that we're going to hit budget on those. Our supply accounts, at this point, our supplies and materials are 55% of the budget has been expended, which again is about where we would expect it at this point during the year. That includes electricity, natural gas and oil that we think were pretty much on budget in those accounts and potentially could turn back a small amount of money in the oil and natural gas accounts. That pretty much, those are really the major accounts. And if there's any questions?
Brian?
Yeah, Tom, I know we transferred 200,000 into substitutes, certified substitutes earlier. And we're still way, way over budget even with that. Are there any working theories as to why we have so many, so much expenditure in substitute teachers? And I know we have favorability in long-term. So I'm curious, are you anticipating that we transfer more of the long-term line item into the daily item?
The, these numbers are as of the end of February. In the month of March, the talent office has been going through the substitute account or went through the substitute accounts in really some great detail. I don't know whether Stephanie has updated Sharice on all the details there, but I do know that they identified certain expenses that were charged to the daily account that in fact should have been charged to the long-term substitute account. So there has been some revision in the actuals, journal entry corrections that have been made in the month of March but aren't reflected on the February report. With that said, you're correct. We did transfer in a couple hundred thousand dollars into the substitute accounts in total. And so we are expecting the substitute accounts are going to run over the original budget. And the talent office is looking pretty closely into that now. We've put in place some new procedures to match up that when a substitute is hired, we want to know who they're substituting for and then confirm that that person they're substituting for is actually not here. In some of the cases, the substitute expenses, and you'll see, if you look at the transfer going into the substitute account, we were, we took money from the regular wage account in a number of cases from the schools where those substitutes are being used. And the reason we did that is that some of these long-term substitutes are filling in for an employee who may be on a long-term, you know, family medical leave. They may be in an unpaid status while they're out on a longer-term leave. So there may be, in fact, offsetting savings, and there is offsetting savings in some of the cases, for employees who are out on an unpaid leave and the position is being filled via substitute.
So now, you can do those reclasses without our approval, right? That's not a budget transfer. Something was misclassified as short-term versus long-term.
That's correct.
You find it, you can expense it appropriately.
Yes.
And I know this, this line item seems to have seasonality, at least my limited experience here. Last year, if you recall, we had huge spikes in absences in April and May. So I'm bringing all this up because I'm a little concerned that we have a lot of risk here in this line item still going forward, so.
You know, the big picture here is that we need to, we need data and we need a comprehensive study of absenteeism and how these funds are being used. So this was not one of our objectives for this year because we had so many other things ahead of it. But next year, I'm going to be asking Ms. Sherry to conduct such a study based upon our '16-'17 data. Going to be asking you to set that as a goal. There may be a number of issues here. And, you know, part of it is the rate of absenteeism, which we know from state data is higher than the state average. But there are also other issues in terms of how these funds are managed. And it may be that we would have greater accountability for this if this was part of stage three of student-based budgeting and the schools actually had to manage their own. We also think, we don't know, but we think that there is a great deal of variability in attendance among schools. Some schools have excellent attendance, other schools have less than excellent attendance. And so I think this is an area where, at the current time, we have to resist, you know, generalizations and one-shot solutions, but get enough data to have a comprehensive approach to this. And, you know, I think the approach involves both the reduction of absenteeism from a wellness standpoint and entitlement standpoint, and also the better management of these substitute funds. This has been a chronic issue. It's at least four or five years old, as clearly as we can see. But again, it's coming up, you know, and is going to demand our attention on the list of things that we have to address going forward.
Thanks, Tom. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Shirley?
Yeah, just to piggyback on everything, we brought this up at the last, and Sharice said that when, like you said, when we get time, we'll do a study on it to try to, so it's not something that's just coming up. So it was noticed last time, so, and I believe that they're very aware of it, so.
Okay. All right. That'll do it. Thanks, Tom. I think you're free to go. All right. We will now proceed to committee and representative reports. Let's start with Dr. Krevikor. What's going on in the realm of special ed?
The March meeting was canceled due to the snow. So our next meeting is in April. That's it for that committee in terms of when we're going to meet. When we do meet in April, we're going to start talking about, we're going to share a document, an Excel document, to try and track the court recommendations in terms of accomplishments, what's in progress and what we need to still work on. Then I might, I will need to reschedule with Mr. Hamilton to have him come in May instead of April, because there's just not enough time because of the cancellation for March. As far as the Norwalk Facilities Construction Commission, we did not meet this month, so I'm expecting to meet in April.
Okay. You're going to be getting busy soon with all those school projects. Brian, what's going on in finance?
Finance, we had a rescheduled special meeting last month and just started socializing some of the potential operational cuts. I'm going to table any conversation on that deference to Dr. Adamowski. I would just like to say, I would like to thank Dr. Adamowski, Tom Hamilton and staff for shepherding us through this part of a very, what looked like an impossible situation in the budget. And I think we've made great progress and I know with a little more hard work and sharpening some pencils, we'll be able to get it over the goal line. So thanks.
Okay. Heidi, what's new and exciting in policy?
We had to cancel our last meeting. We had a prior conflict with another meeting, so our next meeting will be April 4th. We will discuss transgender, which we will be working on, which we've spoken about before, but we actually will be tackling that, as well as board notification of school events as well. Prior to this meeting tonight, I did attend the Norwalk Early Childhood Council meeting, which we've been trying to have. It's our second meeting. It's comprised of about 18 members. Originally, I believe it was about 32, so we're down to 18. It's a very cohesive, engaging group. We will be- We will be tackling school readiness, family empowerment, as well as advocacy. So we'll be splitting up into small groups and working on that. And also prior, actually, after that, I went to a quick meeting with CONCAN and some of the board watchers that are in the audience right now. So I just introduced myself and learned a little bit about what they're doing as volunteers.
Okay, great. All right, negotiations committee, as you know, at the last meeting, we, we signed off on three completed negotiations. We got three out of our five contracts done. The custodian mediation was scheduled right on the day of the snowstorm, so we had to put that off to next month, but it is scheduled. We're still sort of on hold with the, with the food service workers. There are some proposals that have been exchanged, and at the moment, we're sort of looking at each other's proposals, and, and we'll start that back up soon. I did want to mention also that I was contacted by Mr. Kleppen, who's the Planning and Zoning Director, and he asked me to recommend a Board of Education member to serve on their new advisory committee for the redraft of the Plan of Conservation Development. This is the city's master planning process. So I appointed Eric Anderson to that position to represent us, in particular because Eric has worked on the POCD in the past as a member of the Board of Estimate Taxation. So he's familiar with the, with the staff and the process involved in the POCD amendment process. I will say that I was very grateful that the Planning and Zoning Commission has thought to include us in the process. We should be a major part of that process of, of planning, because obviously, if the POCD calls for a lot of additional housing, for instance, that directly impacts on us. So I was very pleased that they reached out to us and gave us an opportunity to participate in that process. Mike, facilities?
Good evening, everybody. As you know, we've been working on a facilities master plan for quite some time, which the board voted to approve on January 17th. And we were in longstanding discussions with the city side, and I think as everyone knows, the mayor did submit his capital budget to the Board of Estimate by the March, on March 15th, which was the deadline. And that, that submission was exactly the board's plan with the construction of two new schools, two renovations is news, as well as funds to do tier one and tier two repairs on existing schools, and in some schools also repairs of tier three and tier four, as that was kind of how they were ranked by Silver Petrocelli in the facilities utilization study. So the Board of Estimate needs to make their decision on a cap for the budget, the capital budget, by April 15th. And so we will need their approval, and then the common council approves. And once those votes have taken place, the superintendent can appoint ad spec committees for the two projects which we will be submitting to the state by June 30th, the EDO 49, which is the key form that we need to get in with the state to get through the state approval process. So that's kind of where it's going on our projects. At the city, NORC, the Board of Ed, has the resources to oversee projects of this magnitude. In the last big build-out under Mayor Alex Knopp, Gal Bane was hired, and as the projects ebbed and flowed, they, they could size their teams back and forth. And we have the same plan for this next round. So we are interviewing people for the project management position. I believe we're going to have those interviews on Monday. It's really being driven by the city, but I will be there representing the Board of Ed, as will Bill Hodel. Not sure if Tom, he'll be there too, but anyway, we'll be vetting these candidates to make a decision. So that's kind of how's everything moving along. As facilities chair, and even before I was facilities chair, I've been very involved in, in trying to get our snow clearing situation, which is the most ridiculous structure where our custodians clean out to 25 feet from the school building, Parks and Recs clean sidewalks, and DPW cleans parking lots. And trying to coordinate those three groups after a big storm with a deadline looming is no easy task, and really, it fails most of the time. So there were some problems, as you know, last Wednesday, and really, it was a combination of factors, conditions, and also the structure. So I actually had a meeting after the last bad winter, 1415, with Bruce Tremendo and some different people from the city on July 1 of 2015, trying to get in advance, get prepared that winter, 1516, we really had no snow, but now we're back to it. Anyway, there will be a meeting this coming Thursday between all these different groups, trying to see if we can coordinate better and potentially restructure how snow clearing is approached at our 20 campuses.
Thank you, sir.
Standby.
Heidi, curriculum and liaisons?
We have a couple of things going on. We had to cancel our curriculum committee meeting tonight because Dr. Connor had to be at the Early Childhood Council, so we couldn't, we couldn't split him in half, unfortunately. So we had to cancel it, but we will probably reschedule for next Tuesday night. One of the things that we're going to discuss is the police partnership program that we're looking to do over at Briggs Pathways. We met with Marie Allen and the Police Department two weeks ago, looking to do sort of a mini academy, a police academy over there, see what it would take and what they can offer. They've done little things in the past couple of years, and they've seen, the students very engaged in it, in it. And actually, some of them want to be police officers now because of, you know, a little taste of what it's like. There was one testimony from the school resource officer that's there now, said there was one young kid who was just really in a lot, always in a lot of trouble. They did a little mini academy, just a taste of it, and it's actually, he's now looking to go into criminal justice and go take the police test. So we're looking to do that, meet on that. Athletics, you know, the Tuesday last week when the school was canceled, it backed everything up. And so we had to do, I contacted the athletic directors, and they had to do a little finagling with the gym to reschedule practices and things, because there's some teams that are in playoffs and things like that. So we got that straightened out. And safety, as you know, last time I spoke about the opioid video from the U.S. District Attorney, we agreed that it would be shown throughout all the schools by the end of this month. So I believe that has taken place. I did follow up with a couple of the PE teachers, and they've already done it.
Good. Any other liaison reports? No? Okay. All right, then, next, we will go to board member announcements. We'll start on the side of the table. Shirley?
Yes, a couple of things. I attended Norwalk High School Observatory ribbon-cutting. Heidi was there with me. And then I attended the tour of Jefferson School, so had opportunity to tour the school. And right now, currently, the, the Connecticut State NWCP, in collaboration with the North Branch, is hosting a ninth annual Great Debate, and with the superintendent provided buses for that. And we want to thank you for, for that opportunity. It's going to be on April 19th. It's going to be, be held as a school day field trip. This is something that the Connecticut State Conference have started and put together since 19, since 2008. It's going to be a debate series. It's going to be between Yale and Howard University, and it's going to be at the Webster Bank Arena, and at 10 o'clock. The coordinator of that is the NWCP Youth Works Coordinator, Rosa Murray. So if you want to get in touch with her to reserve tickets, you can. And, but the, the debate is a, is, is unique. You know, it's, it's, because it's held during a school day, it's educational to help kids, you know, see how each school, and it, it deals with a historical black college, college, and an Ivy League college. And it, it touches on different areas that kids will be debating on, like policies, things like that. And if you have an opportunity, please attend. And again, it is April 19th, 20, Ms. Murray is passing out handouts on that. And basically, the goal is to raise consciousness and capture high school, middle school students who might not be exposed to debate, to give them a feeling of what debates are about, and, you know, and that's what the primary goal is. And again, one more time, we'd like to thank the superintendent for providing us the bus service for this event.
Okay, thank you.
And April 19th.
Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I did want to just make a couple of quick announcements. To piggyback on something Heidi had mentioned as far as policy coming up, we are looking forward to addressing transgender and gender non-conforming protections for our students. So this would be a part of our nondiscrimination policy. But one thing we did propose in our last meeting was being able to take this opportunity to look at all of our antidiscrimination policy and see how it stands currently, how we could make it better, and how ultimately, we can take it to that next step to make it more of an inclusion and almost have opportunities to bring it into the educational environment as well. And I, I know Ms. Jordan had mentioned some great comments there and some potential opportunities for, you know, looking to do more in the schools with our diversity. So I am looking forward to that coming up at our next meeting. To touch on Chairman Lyons pointing me to the POCD, which I'm just going to lovingly call the master plan because that's what it is.
That's what I always call it.
It's what I think everybody knows it as. One, I, while I was serving on the Board of Estimate and Taxation, I, it's not something we normally use. However, Chairman Jim Clark, he and I were both looking at it for ways to find out how we could better budget, how we could look and see what the roles we have as far as being able to manage the tax dollars. And being able to look at this again with a real great group of people is something I am excited about, to really bring, as Chairman said, the focus of our schools and how we are going to be potentially bringing in more people, and also various different things on open space. It's an exciting opportunity, and I look forward to reporting back to the board with how we move forward on that. I did speak briefly with Steve Kleppen, and it is looking to be around a 16-month process, so it's not going to be over a huge period of time. So I am looking forward to that process. I do also want to take this opportunity to thank parents. We've thanked the elected officials, we've thanked Superintendent Adamowski, and we've thanked the appointed officials for everything that was going forward on our budget process, our capital and operating. And I do thank them as well. But there were so many parents and other community members that came out and voiced their support or concerns or anything, just the vocal support from the community on this topic was really astounding, and I wanted to take, take this opportunity to thank the public for really being a big voice in this process and helping our mayor and our other elected officials and appointed officials see how important this is to so many citizens in Norwalk. And with that being said, I am taking the opportunity to meet with my district this coming Thursday at 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Columbus Elementary School. Mr. Thomas has been nice enough to offer up the space to have a community conversation where I get to have an opportunity to speak to my constituency as well as those that have children that go to the schools in our district, that we can talk about the strategic operating plan. We have the opportunity to look at our facilities plan, what we've done and where we're going. So I'm looking forward to that as well. So that's it for me.
Heidi?
Yeah, two quick items, as Ms. Mosby mentioned, attended the Observatory grand opening at Norwalk High School, also attended the Columbus School Fresh Market. It's like a little mini Stew Leonard's. You know, you go, you buy your fruits and vegetables, and you hit the cash register on the way out. But they didn't have any ice cream, but it was great. Really, kids are amazing.
I, I think the main thing I'd like to talk about is Norwalk hosted NEMFA, which is the New England Music Festival, which took place this last weekend. There are about 450 kids from all over New England. It was pretty much organized. Brian McMahon was the theoretical host, and the money they raised was going to Brian McMahon. But it really was a team effort, with both Mr. Arakari and Mr. Sechi. But the two people who really organized the whole thing and need to be thanked by all of us is our two parents, one of whom happens to work for the Board of Ed, Gene Starkman, and Chrissy McGee, who's a small business owner in Norwalk. And they found, this is one of only two festivals across the country where, instead of the kids being put up in hotels, they actually stay with families. So 150-plus Norwalk families took kids in, including mine. We had three boys from Old Lime, who were the most interesting kids, I have to say. Totally from a different world, but it was really exciting. They did, they put on a big concert in the concert hall on Saturday afternoon, and it was really exciting to be part of the whole process. So well done, well done, Norwalk.
Heidi?
Yeah, I have some very sad and tragic news. We lost a young life on March 15th, a young girl from Westrocks. She was an eighth grader. She was 13 years old. Her name is Ilani Pamela Saldana. Our thoughts and prayers are with her family at this time, and if we can maybe have a moment of silence on her behalf and her family. And our hearts go out to the whole Westrocks and the whole Norwalk community.
Thank you, Heidi. Brian, anything?
No announcements, thanks.
Okay.
Just one, that I, with several board members, went to Jefferson's Elementary School to tour the building and to look at some of the concerns that they have in terms of facilities.
I was also on the Jefferson tour, yeah.
I'm so sorry, I forgot to mention that there were three events I did attend that I wanted to give a shout out to the schools. Jefferson had the most fantastic fundraiser for their fifth grade field trip. It's a basketball fundraiser where the kids come in, they get to play on court. That was a great opportunity to attend. I also attended that night Brookside's Taco Fundraiser Night, which is a great opportunity for the families to get together. I had a wonderful meeting with Rob Pennington and Sandra Fauch, and really got to have an in-depth tour of the school while having conversations with the parents. And then from there, left and went to Columbus to catch the tail end of their lottery. Basically, it was a tour for all the parents that are going into the lottery, and it's an opportunity for information given to them. Mr. Thomas did surprise me and asked me to speak to the parents, which I got a chance to do, but it was really wonderful talking to the parents that are hopeful to get into one of our most fantastic schools, and to also have the opportunity to talk to them about some of the other schools that we have, you know, but also plugging that you are going to get in, I have faith in you. So I wanted to mention that, I apologize.
All right. I also was at the Jefferson tour. I wanted to, I wanted to comment briefly on the, the whole process going on at Hartford right now. I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, want to make sure, got that in while the news media was here, the thanks to the parents who had gone up to Hartford in person to testify. And I think, you know, we all need, the members of this board, the members of the city administration, the PTOC, everybody, we need to insist that our legislative delegation not simply settle for accepting crumbs from the table this time. Year after year, we hear that we're going to do something about the ECS formula, and then we get $300,000 more, and somebody issues a press release, patting themselves on the back on what a wonderful job they've done getting us $300,000. And meanwhile, other cities are getting tens of millions more than we are. You know, when I, when I made this speech to the common council about our operating budget, our capital budget, they said, you know, if there's ever going to be a year when the city could put a major investment into the school system, this is the year. Economy's growing, the city's reserve is gigantic, tax revenues are going up. This is the time you got to make the commitment. You can't do it when the next recession comes around. And it's sort of the same way at the state, okay? You can see the, the status quo forces up in Hartford already arraigned. The bill that, that was under consideration, that our people were testifying on, is a status quo bill, at least as far as we're concerned. Now, it does throw $6 million of additional money to Stanford while giving us about $200,000 more. Okay? That is the standard Norwalk bottom-of-the-barrel approach that the Chairman of the Education Committee seems to revel in, as far as I can tell. And that bill clearly is not the solution to this problem. Now, we know Senator Duff has put in Senate Bill Two, that's sort of a placeholder, the bill doesn't really have any details, but it is, it is, because of its procedural status, a bill that has a reasonable likelihood of getting through the legislative session. We need that bill to be beefed up, and we need that our legislative leaders to pound their fist on the table and go fight for us, okay? I don't like Mr. Fleishman very much from West Hartford, and he represents a far wealthier town with far fewer problems than we have, but you got to give the guy credit. He's manipulated the system in such a way that Norwalk gets $1,013 per child, and his wealthier town gets $2,230 per child, well over $2,230. wealthier town gets $2,230 per child, well over twice as much as we do per student, okay? Now, you know, as far as Fleishman is a state representative representing his town, he's doing a bang-up job. I don't think he's doing a particularly good job as chairman of the Education Committee for the whole state, but he's certainly representing his town, and we need our legislative delegation to be a little like Fleishman. They gotta go up there, and they gotta pound their fist on the table. We should not settle for crumbs from the table as we usually do. And I'll tell you, you know, I was thinking of an analogy, because this is, this is the likely outcome here. We're gonna hear that, hey, we got, we got Norwalk a million dollars more. Pat ourselves on the back, pat ourselves on the back, isn't that great? We got you a million dollars more. Now, we're shorted $23 million a year, every year, under that formula. So if our legislative delegation brings us a million dollars more, that is, as the kids would call it, an epic fail, okay? And we've had enough epic fails. We need our legislators to make some noise up there for us and fight for their town. And, you know, I was thinking of an analogy, if, let's say you're a contractor, you do home improvement work, and you just did a $23,000 kitchen rehab for a homeowner. You finish the work, it's all done fine, you got your CO, and the homeowner just refuses to pay you. So you hire a lawyer, and the lawyer starts a lawsuit against the homeowner and calls you up one day and says, hey, that $23,000 that you owed, what a deal I've got for you. They're gonna pay you a thousand bucks on it. Okay, would you think your lawyer had done a great job? If he brought you a thousand bucks out of the $23,000 you owed? I wouldn't. And I'm tired of having our legislators bring us the equivalent of the thousand bucks against the $23,000, and everybody's supposed to be happy about that. We should not be happy about that. We need to insist that our legislators go up there, pound the table, fight for us. Now, I'm realistic, I know the state is in financial trouble and everything, and we're not going to close that $23 million gap in a year, but I could live with getting five million more next, this year, and five million more the next year, and then another five, and another five, and then you're pretty much caught up to where we should have been all along. And this is not theoretical. I mean, every year, we get $11 million from the state, Danbury gets almost $32 million. Same population, same socioeconomic base, they get triple our funding from the state. That is unacceptable, and we need people, you know, we've done our part. We've sent in our testimony, our people have gone to Hartford and testified. The public hearings are over, it's up to our legislative delegation now, and they really need to fight for us and not tolerate crumbs from the table anymore. So, off my soapbox. Next item is approval of minutes. First set of minutes is the February 7, 2017 set, is there a motion to approve? So moved, I already seconded. Any changes, corrections? I have one little typo on page two, the second motion, it says Mr. Babus seconded the motion.
Who's Mr. Davis?
Babus.
Oh.
Think you need an R in there. Other than that, they looked okay to me. Any other changes? Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate, and it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, everybody, okay? Any objections? Any abstentions? One abstention, Adele? Okay, and so motion carries, those minutes are approved. Next is February 21, 2017, is there a motion to approve? So moved, Eric seconded. Arty, any changes or corrections?
I do.
Yes, Adele?
Page five, on the bottom of the page, under the heading Special Education Ad Hoc Committee.
Yep.
Second sentence, delete the words "in line with five oh four plans."
Okay.
And in the last sentence, it should read, he added that the next meeting will be in March, as opposed April.
Okay.
And on the agenda is feedback to Mr. Ralph Valenzisi on the Section Five Oh Four manual, and there will be a presentation by Mrs. Stacy Heiligenthaler on the parent handbook for the Special Education Services manual.
Got all that? Okay, good, thank you. Mr. Chair? Yes, Shirley?
Yes, age seven, of eight. The board member announcement, also, the second line, also she attended to play hairspray at Ponus. It was at West Rocks. And then as part of the Ponus comment, I mentioned that Ponus was putting together a production, and I asked that maybe in the future that we should think of getting a line item in a budget for arts, because Ponus was trying to raise money so that they can have their production of Into the Woods Junior.
Any other changes? All right, hearing number, proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes as amended? All in favor, thank you. And last set is March 7, motion to approve. Heidi, second?
I'll second.
Any changes, corrections? Page four, last paragraph, third line, those thoughts in their mind, opposed to mid. Some people may put it in their mid. All right, anything else? All in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate. And we have, let's hold the hands up, because we got a few people. One, two, three, four, five, six. Opposed? Abstentions? Three? Not the three abstentions. All right, 603, and those meetings are, minutes are also approved. Thank you very much. All right, the next item on the agenda is contract negotiations and administration. Chairman Entertainment motion to go into executive session for that purpose. Eric moves. Arty seconds. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? And we are in executive session, and we'll take our traditional five-minute recess.
Restroom and building machines.